This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Lander County Commission Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain, and Austin Board of County Highways Commission for October 28th, 2021. So Patsy, will you go ahead and leave us in a pledge, please?
Thank you.
Just showing you the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. All right, moving forward. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
No report, thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I did have a meeting after the last Commissioner's meeting at home. And as a result of that meeting, I want to apologize for coming to a meeting when I should have called in. I can't believe I said "call in." But I will not come to meetings anymore if I don't feel well. I've just been pushing way too hard, and again, I apologize for my decorum at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything?
No report.
No report.
All right. Staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
Everything I have is on the agenda, thank you.
All right, very good. All right, under public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. Any discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner. Public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment?
Muted. Unmuted.
Hi, my name's Corey Warwood, and I'm speaking at a citizen and not in my professional capacity. I would just like to submit to the county commission about possibly moving the county commission meeting. Possibly one meeting a month, have it in the afternoon or evening. That way, we can accommodate just the people who do have jobs and don't have the liberty to take time off work, to be able to attend and be informed about the different things that our commissioners passing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. And then also, just with the voting, I know it's on the agenda, but I actually have to run after this.
We can't, we have to speak. We have to speak when it comes up, so I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is why I would love to just have a commissioner meeting in the afternoon, because of my job, I need to leave because I have other duties. And as a citizen here, I would just like to be able to have input on some of these things, or just more importantly, be informed, rather than having to watch the videos on YouTube days later.
She can give public comment, correct? On an item, it's just public comment.
Not right now, it's agenda.
So that's why I would ask to move the meetings, at least once a month.
If you want to take a minute before you leave and jot down anything that you'd like us to hear, you can give it to our county manager, so we have your input on the agenda.
And you can read it into the record.
Okay, thank you.
And I did make public comment for you last time when you were texting me for...
Oh, okay.
Yes, I didn't make public comment on moving the meeting, because that had been previously discussed. But I did make public comment on everything else that you'd sent me.
All right, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Moving forward, for the consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any board member, any member of the board or citizen may request that an item be taken out of, from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Okay, number one, approval of October 21st, 2021 agenda notice. Number two, approval of August 26th, 2021 meeting minutes. Number three, approval of September 9th, 2021 meeting minutes. And number four, approval of September 23rd, 2021 meeting minutes. Number five, approval of October 14th, 2021 meeting minutes. Number six, approval of payroll change requests. So do I have a motion?
I didn't receive any minutes, so I will make a motion. I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you're fine.
I will make a motion that we approve number one, the October 28th agenda notice, and number six, the approval of payroll change request. We did have one.
So Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
For number one, discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. Excluding, we need to poll check number 213452, 213531, 213601. So excluding those three, can I get a motion for payment of bills?
Could I get a clarification on that? Is that 601 or 501 on that last number?
I have 213601 is what I have.
Let me check. Is it written down wrong, Patsy?
Is that right?
I don't know. Let's do that last one.
Got it.
Is it 601?
It is a 601. I looked at it and thought it was 501, but it's 601, thank you. I'll make a motion, we approve the bills, and taking out those three checks.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
So Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, all right.
And I make a motion, we approve check number 213452, 213531, and 213601.
All right, a second?
All second.
Patsy made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have to make mine, Porter.
All right, moving forward. We're going to recess the Board of Lander County Commissions and convene the meeting of the Lander County Health Board, composed of Lander County Board of Commissions, Sheriff Ron Unger and Dr. Troy Ross.
Ron's not here, do we have Troy on the phone? Troy, are you online? I don't think he's on yet, maybe we can move on and come back to this?
Okay. We'll come back to this one. All right, so we're gonna adjourn from that meeting of the Lander County Health Board and reconvene the meeting of Lander County Board of County Commissions, okay, for number three. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the site lease agreement between Lander County and Eureka Television District as licensee. The site licensee agreement has been previously approved in error as between Lander County and Eagle Communications.
So this is just housekeeping, we did the wrong name on it. Okay, so I will...
What happened is Eagle Communication are the ones that came and gave us the proposal. So we thought that we were doing a site license agreement between Lander County and Eagle Communication. And then Eureka says, they called and said, "No, no, no, it's between Lander County and Eureka TV Board." So this is just fixing that problem.
Okay, so...
So it's a site license agreement between Lander County and Eureka.
I will make a motion that we correct our lease agreement. It is not with Eagle Communications, and approve the site license agreement with Eureka Television District as a licensee.
All right, a second?
Do we have to sign on that, too?
Is there public comment on this?
Yes. My name is Bill Lepala, Chairman of the Eureka County Television District.
That little thing, can you hit the button, so turn it green for us?
Right in the front.
Right in the very front, right there.
There it is. Okay, my name is Bill Lepala, and I'm Chairman of the Eureka Television District. And I come over here to listen to what we had. Unfortunately, the contract was listed with Eagle Communication that does not have anything to do except that they are our repair group. That's what they do, they have no other interest, except we pay them, fix our stuff. And I assume some of you people want to know where we are as far as acquisition of proper equipment and installation, and when we can provide the service, or we can combine the services of the two television districts. Have any question?
Dear Congress, under the impression we were gonna get one or two more channels, you know, like upgrade everything?
Yes, it'll be like we have in Eureka County. Right now, we have six or seven channels and about 24 separate stations on those channels. And it will increase the coverage, because then you'll have the same as we have. And evidently, one of the reasons for the combination, I guess, up on top of the hill at a general ridge, is to... The Lander County group has got some older building, they've got some older equipment, we have the newer equipment, and between the two of us, we can provide much better television to Lander County. And also, because we need to go to an air fiber instead of a straight fiber network, we're gonna air fiber, we need someplace down here in Lander County to transmit that signal to our facility. And that's what this is all about.
I have a quick question. What about Austin in this loop? Is Austin included anywhere in this?
The only thing about Austin, poor guys live in the tunnel anyway. But anyway, Austin, evidently, at some point in time, when we get the bugs worked out in Eureka, then we'll be able to talk about providing some service overland to Austin, provided, at this point in time, I'm told that we have a clear shot to Austin. Because of the height and the various sundry sites in between it, that we have a clear shot in order to provide a linear signal to some point near Austin that could be retransmitted down into that little canyon they're in. And I don't know that, having lived down in Kingston at one point in my life, I don't know that they will be able to receive it either. They may, but I don't know.
Because I had called to find out and asked questions in Austin, nobody even knows what the old equipment was, is, for that, I don't know, the TV board there. I'd asked some of the older people there, and they had no idea where the equipment or what hill it was on, or, so, and I didn't know the, I guess, apparently the right person to contact and ask.
Okay, our equipment and, at some point in time, Lander County equipment will be up on our general ridge. It is now there. But the building they have, the building the Lander County group have, would have to be replaced, and all the equipment would have to be renewed. So what we're doing is we're kind of combining the two at one site. And that site transmits like to Crescent Valley and that area, and then the other of it would transmit down into Battle Mountain.
That's the only question that I have, anybody else have any?
Well, in Austin, could you put a repeater down in the canyon somewhere, get everybody covered?
Well, that's what we have to do. But we have not gotten into hard and fast numbers and ordered equipment or anything like this until we get this contract straightened out and get the name and the responsible parties in the same area. So then we can go in, we can acquire equipment, we can budget for equipment, we can budget for repairs for next year, things like this. That's where we're at this point. And at our next meeting, of the Eureka County Television Board, which is probably the second Friday in November, we will, at that point in time, we will take a good hard look at the equipment acquisition and installation, and where it's going, and how we're gonna do it, and finalize the details, so it can be done, hopefully, before the snow flies too hard.
Any other questions? Or public comment? Are we good to go? So Patsy's already...
I was finishing out my motion, and authorized the chair to sign.
All right, so Patsy made the motion, JR, or Brian, sorry, I'm sorry. Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, and thank you for coming for the update.
Thank you very much. So do we have...
Can I see a copy of a contract and sign it today, or if you have it, or? Okay, great, that'd be just great.
Yes, you can, and yes, you can.
Are you authorized?
Yes, I am.
So... Okay. All right, Dr. Ross, are you there?
Dr. Ross, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, how about now?
Muted. Unmuted.
I'm... Sounds like I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Can you hear?
I can.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and recess from the Lander County Commission, and convene the meeting of the Lander County Health Board, composed of Lander County Board of Commissions, Sheriff Unger, and Dr. Troy Ross. So number two, for Lander County Health Board, for discussion, possible action to approve/disapprove the vaccine informed consent prepared and submitted by Chairman Troy Ross as the Lander County Health Board Regulations and Current Policies, and if approved, to request the District Attorney to put the regulations/ ordinance form for passage and adoption.
And so, to give the board an introduction to this, I haven't getting a lot of feedback, can you hear me clearly?
I can.
I can.
Okay, sorry, I'll keep going then. The reason for this proposed ordinance is due to the significance of the current emergency use authorization therapeutics that are being utilized in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And there are various federal laws and regulations that need to be considered, and laws that need to be followed when these medical treatments are being provided to patients. And I don't have confidence that those have been clearly elucidated in the provision of this care, and then we also, at present, don't have any way to ensure that patients are receiving proper and complete informed consent before taking these vaccines or medications. So the intent of this ordinance would be to hold all medical providers accountable and ensure that they're offering fully informed consent.
So on this, do we have some public comment?
Sure, Jason Blake, for the record, hospital CEO. I drafted together a quick letter to the county commission and sent it out yesterday. I don't know if you would like me to read that into record today, but I can do so if needed. What's that? This is dated 27th of October 2020. Dear Lander County Commissioners, I wish to express my opinion in opposition to the proposed regulations/ ordinance surrounding vaccine informed consent. This proposed regulation/ ordinance remains consistent with previous actions of the county to dissuade the public from or hinder their ability to access the desired COVID-19 vaccine. For nearly two years, the world has been impacted by and focused on the fight against COVID-19. There isn't a day that goes by, nor a new cycle that passes, that doesn't address at least one aspect of this pandemic. It has truly changed all of our lives in ways that were uncontemplated. Still today, the healthcare industry continues to be stressed in its capacity and beyond, while trying to care for those that are affected. As the world began trying to defend themselves from this virus, we began from square one without understanding of treatments or prevention strategies. Over the course of the pandemic, many lessons have been learned and will continue to be learned. However, at this time, there are few strategies that have been shown to be effective. One of these strategies is to utilize vaccinations that have met the emergency use authorization standards by our national healthcare authorities. The offered vaccinations have shown a reduction in deaths and hospitalizations due to the COVID-19 virus. I feel that the proposed regulation is based in a faulty assumption that those volunteering to get the vaccine are uninformed. After nearly two years of constant focus and a rather large river of information, those that are choosing to be vaccinated have made a personal decision after considering the information that they feel is accurate. Even after their decision to sign up for the vaccine, they are given more information in the vaccine information sheets and required to sign a consent form to ensure that they are resolute in their decision. The regulation as presented would require even more time and information to be pushed upon the individual that has chosen to be vaccinated. This added effort seems to be aimed at dissuading the individual from their decision to be vaccinated. As the primary source of the COVID-19 vaccine in Lander County, the hospital would be greatly hindered by the proposed regulations requiring extra time and effort by staff and providers to hold counseling on an individualized basis, as mass vaccination efforts, to this point, have been provided by a few employees that have found a little bit of time away from the regular duties that could be spared to offer this service. By requiring more time and effort for the vaccination process, the county would make the challenge of mass vaccination much more difficult, if not impossible, for the hospital to continue. By moving this regulation forward, the county would be limiting the freedom of individuals to access the health care that they voluntarily choose for themselves. In closing, I reiterate my opposition to the proposed regulation ordinance, and hope that each commissioner will vote to preserve the individual's freedom and ability to access the care that they have chosen for themselves. Respectfully, Jason Blake.
Thank you.
Jason, just a quick question. When your folks are giving the vaccine shots, you give them the information, is there anywhere that they sign? They sign when they come in, or they sign...
There's a separate consent form that goes through the various aspects of the vaccine, making sure that they understand when they're to come back.
Okay, so they're already signing one consent form?
Yep, they sign a consent at the time of vaccine.
Okay.
And they are giving them, they are given a vaccine information sheet at that time as well. We also post it online, so that they can access it prior to, and when we're scheduling them, we encourage them to look that up in advance.
Thank you.
So a couple of concerns I have, I think by passing this, it causes an unfunded mandate to the hospital who has to do all of this, the requirement is. Second, I don't know if it's our place to be getting in through the middle of these kind of regulations. As a county, we're starting to put mandates on things where it doesn't, it's not our place to do that. And so, and then at the bottom, you know, failure to do this, subject to penalties, which is very fearful, so then you're basically pushing out any ability for anybody in Lander County to get vaccines. Because if it's unfunded, and it goes to the hospital, and they can't do it, you're tying the hands, if they can't do it, then there's no place in Lander County for people to be vaccinated, and I just think that that's wrong. And if somebody wants the choice to be vaccinated, that's their choice, to do the research, and it's up to them to, you know, kind of figure out, just like I had to figure it out and muddle through it. And so I just think that I struggle with, for one, unfunded mandates. I know we don't like it when we get them handed down from the legislature, and I don't like handing them back out to others. And I think that this is not our place to be in the middle of, and so...
If I might respond to that?
This is only applicable to county villains, you know that.
No, I didn't see where that's anywhere in there.
Well, we don't have the legal authority to tell a private business what they're doing. This is applicable to county buildings.
Okay, so that basically takes out the use of Austin for them to be able to utilize those buildings there?
No, it doesn't take out, what they can do is give informed consent in county buildings.
But you have the people that are volunteering to do that, having to go back all the way, that you're requiring them to go back all the way through when the vaccines began, to make sure that they're giving the registry and contacting all of these people, all the people who are volunteering.
You can't go back in time. I mean, this is...
Well, and I thought that it said that since, that we would go back and make sure that all the people who have received it, that we gave them the information from the registries.
No, no, let me clarify that if I might.
Yes.
That piece of the proposed regulation enforces the already stated recommendation that any pregnant woman be entered into a pregnancy registry. And that is in complete accordance with every EUA that has been granted for these vaccines. To the point of the unfunded mandate, this is not something that is going to create new work. It is something that is reiterating what is an obligation and a legal requirement for any healthcare provider to provide fully informed consent. Now, Mr. Blake mentioned that vaccine information statements are being given out. And in the background of this proposal, it very clearly, with the references, shows that the vaccine information statements do not comprise informed consent. That is already established by the CDC and in federal law, and all ethics of medical practice. So vaccine information statements are meaningful, but they do not provide fully informed consent to the point of people doing their own research. Unfortunately, there is no effective way to make sure that the research that people are doing online or through the media... are doing online or through the media is actually giving them the pertinent information that they need to make a rational, fully informed decision. And again, it is the obligation of every licensed medical practitioner to provide fully informed consent, which includes risks and benefits of the proposed intervention and then also options to that proposed intervention. That is not provided in the vaccine information statement. This does not in any way hinder people from accessing or being able to get a vaccination. What it does is to ensure that every provision of federal law and ethical codes of medical practice are followed, rather than people being rushed into and coerced into getting this intervention. And I'll look for any feedback to that, thank you.
On number three, it says the regulations apply to all that vaccination administration of people, women and children, clear back to December of twenty twenty. So meaning that anybody that has done any vaccination back to that point, they have to go back to the contact of these people and make sure that they have, and help them with the registration if they were pregnant. So then on this, that was my question to begin with. So then you have all of these people who have been vaccinated, say like in Austin, because within the county buildings there, those, all those volunteers have to go back through and contact all these people and help them with the registration, correct?
Offer them the ability and, and that's women of childbearing ages, not for children. But again, that is something that's laid out in the instructions to anybody who would administer this vaccination, that women of childbearing age or pregnant women should be offered the opportunity to participate in the pregnancy registry. If that has already been done, then that just needs to be documented. But I suspect that that has not been accomplished and that's doing a great disservice to women who may be pregnant in the time course of having received this vaccination.
And item six in our, in their backup there, Kathy, on the very back, it gives you the links that you could research where the registry is something that needs to be done, so. I think that's what Dr. Troy is trying to say, is that we're just ma- making sure that we're following federal guidelines and regulations to the T. And he feels that we're not doing that as a county per se, so.
So then my other question is, is before that we can act on any of this, it has to be approved by the state health board as well before, even though we were to pass it, the state health board would have to agree before we would able, be able to put this into action, correct?
That's correct.
I, my biggest question was why are you trying to make it so difficult for people to get vaccines, but I'm listening to all the information. But I also feel like you're basically saying that we don't have, we, we can't look up our own thing, we can't research well enough that we know whether we want to take a vaccine or not. I just, it's like you're saying, well, we want to give people the information that we have, so that means that the information I research is not correct? And how do you know that? I mean, you're taking, you want everybody to have their own rights, but yet you're trying to take it away from them. It's my right to research whatever I want to research and it's my right to research and decide if I want a vaccine or not. And don't you think that most people are doing research? They're trying to decide if they want a vaccine or not? They're not going to just walk in and get a vaccine because somebody has a, I don't know, I'm not going to say that word.
Well, i- if I might, this does not impair anybody's decision to receive a medical treatment. What it does is hold to standards the medical practitioner that's administering the vaccination. And all of this just reiterates what is already in federal law and within the ethical codes of practice for any licensed medical practitioner. What I would like to do is to ensure that every person that's considering receiving a medical treatment is fully informed. And that does involve more than any person doing their own research. It really involves the engagement of the medical practitioner to have that discussion and also to document it.
I think the problem I have with that is not everyone who gives a vaccine is a medical practitioner and it says in here they're going to be doing a full discussion. And, and that does bother me. I, I agree with Kathy, I think we're overstepping a little bit. I think we're giving them every opportunity to make decisions. We've had a town hall meeting, we've done some regulations, but I, I don't approve of going any further with the vaccine informed consent. I think we should leave it up to our constituents and say, we're here for any other information you'd like, but I'm not going to make it more difficult and I'm not going to make anything mandatory that they have to sign from us.
Hi, my name is Catherine Smith. I'm a new constituent. We just moved here a year ago and just brought property out on Hilltop. I'm here as a person, not a professional, and so that should have no effect on my objection to this whole document. I spent the time to read the hundred and fifty-five pages this week and I found major inconsistencies in it. The one that concerns me the most is the one that states that all health employees should have a vaccination. In the next line, it says they will. And I am totally against mandates. I'm a vaccinated person, I share that freely. That was my decision to make. It was not just to protect me, it was to protect others. I consider the form that I signed a consent form as an informed consent form. And I would love to have Dr. Ross share with us why the form that we have, that we provide to thousands, I think there's more than two thousand people that have been vaccinated and I don't know that because those numbers aren't really readily available to the public. But just talking to people, I understand that people should have the opportunity to research for themselves and make an informed decision as adults. I happen to be in one of the categories that you're targeting for vaccinations and information. And I'm here to tell you that having a cell phone or what did they call it, V-phone, something that, I have a lot of notes here and I'm sorry, I'm not prepared.
You're all right.
But I'd be happy to submit formal comments to this regard. For fifty percent of the population that doesn't have a smartphone for notification of when you have to come in for a booster, it's not a good idea, right? The EUAs only list a couple of the vaccines, which only one of is included in this document. It targets Pfizer and Madura, it doesn't include Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is the one that I took. So what do I do? I think if you're going to provide information for a decision of this magnitude, it needs to be accurate. So with that, I just want to once again voice my objection to this board approving this document for use. Thank you.
And I think that we, as a county, we want to provide information for people and they're, as a resource, they can come and get it as a resource and say, hey, we have this information, that's one thing. But, but try to mandating something is just going against the people. That's their, I think that, just like looking it up on the internet or whatever, you can put it out and say, hey, we have this extra information. If you're interested in it, here, you know, these are things that you should read and let the people make the choice instead of us telling them what they're going to do or what, I just, I struggle with that because I just think that it's, we hate the overreach of government and I still believe and I respect where most are coming, but this, this is not for us to get into the middle of and stick our noses into everybody's healthcare and what they choose to do and that's. I agree with that, Kathy, absolutely.
Hey, Dr. Ross, can you, so basically, as far as the informed consent, what do you feel that the, the information that the public aren't receiving that they should be receiving?
As Mr. Blake mentioned, they provide a vaccine information statement, which gives some basic information, but is not informed consent. Informed consent involves a discussion between the licensed practitioner and the patient. And for everybody out there in the rural areas that are administering vaccines, they still are doing that under the license of, of medical professional. It is that medical professional's obligation to ensure that the patient understands both the risks and benefits of this vaccine and also alternatives to it. The main concern that I have is that those vaccine information statements do not clearly identify the risks of this vaccine. And that is something that we have evolving information on. As we get more information on the risks, it is incumbent upon anybody administering that vaccine that the patient is informed of those risks. That's not currently happening.
So I can, I see both sides. But what I'm, honestly, what I, what has been presented to us in our PAC is that I think Dr. Ross is just asking us to follow what is stipulated in the federal guidelines. It's like, I would, I would, I would go a bit further and say, when we vaccinate somebody, do we let them know, like the numbers that have been reported at VAERS? I mean, here's, here's just some, this is the latest update and it could have changed since the, a couple days ago that I documented it, but it was eight hundred and eighteen thousand adverse events, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand doctor visits, eighty-three thousand hospitalizations, ninety-two thousand urgent care, twenty-six thousand disabled, ten thousand Bell's palsy, ten thousand myocarditis, eight thousand heart attacks, twenty-six hundred miscarriages and seventeen thousand deaths. Are, are the people that are being vaccinated aware that these are things that are reported in the federal government system? And if they're not, why? Because if I was somebody that was going to get the vaccine, I would want to know that.
Oh, John, sorry.
I just have one question, Brian.
Yeah.
The numbers you got, are you confident that those are real accurate? Those are the true numbers? Because you can tune into any channel, you can get onto any site and you can get a different set of numbers. Now who's telling the, the real truth here?
Well, this is actually on their website.
Pardon me?
This is actually on their very site.
Oh, that's good, uh huh. Now, there's a lot of people that question that.
Uh huh.
So who do we believe?
Well, and that's where the, the other question I had is because I've had friends of mine that have gone to different counties and that's not saying this is coming from here. And this is where the problem lies. If you have, if you happen to go to a physician who's, who is wholeheartedly against the vaccine, then they tell you only what's wrong with the vaccine. If they're fully for it, they tell you, you know, different information. So it's kind of from what angle you're coming from is what information you get from that clinician. So it's kind of a, you know, I had one friend of mine call me and go, well, I went for information, I'm more confused now than I was before I went. So I think that it's such, it's, it's, when you go to even to a clinician, so I think all of this is confusing for everyone, but I don't, I think it's incumbent of us to allow you to make the decision whether you want the shot or not, whether it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, if you don't want the newer, the newer shots, the Johnson &amp; Johnson, old medicine, that's, that's out there, but it's up to, you know, it's, this information can be on our website that we give out, but not that we are requiring anyone to give anyone this to sign. That's going to have to be a personal choice because we're, I guess can't see dictating this kind of thing. We don't want those things dictated on us anywhere and, but we turn around and I understand and I totally respect where we're coming from. I truly do, because I have a daughter in the military that was made, who's under thirty years old, made to get it or she was going to be discharged, she chose to stay in, she chose to stay in. Am I against requiring vaccination? Oh my God, yes, but it's a personal choice. And this is also a personal choice, whether we choose to get it or not, not by this, that we're going to, under the pains and penalties of civil law, hold somebody accountable for these kind of things. I just think that this, we're pushing too far against what we are supposed to be standing for.
I have a question. I think that one thing that's been lost in this whole discussion is that the commissioners have to protect the county. And that's why this was approached this way, to protect the county. If you're going to have a shot clinic and on public county property, we need to protect the county, isn't that right Ted?
It's my understanding and my belief that this, this regulation, if passed and approved by the state, would only go to, applied to county buildings. It would not apply to, to private businesses like the hospital. It would only apply to county.
Hospital serves not private businesses, the county entity.
Pardon me?
The hospital is not a private business, it's a county entity.
It's their own district.
It's their own district, you're wrong.
Which is the county entity.
Trap, Trap, could you come up there?
Trap, you're wrong.
The second thing that I would like to say is that no matter what this commission does, you can go anywhere and get a COVID vaccine. You can go to Winnemucca, Elko, Wells, anywhere there's a pharmacy, you can get a COVID shot. So I don't see how anybody can claim that the commissioners are stopping them from getting a vaccine. And as far as the mass, mass inoculations, we have a flu pod every year. Hundreds of people are taken care of. So I, you know, I don't understand why anybody would want to suppress information. That, that just doesn't, and if the vaccine was so great and it was the send all to save all, why do people have to make the choice between making a living and getting a vaccine?
That's exactly right. And that's what part of this is about. And that's a problem I have with it, Art.
What's that, John?
Is, why do, okay, one, one question for the good doctor. Is it a law that we sign a consent form? Is this cast in stone? If we don't sign a, I don't remember signing a consent form. Do we have to sign a consent form?
There's nothing, the, the provision for informed consent is an obligation on the medical provider, not the patient. That's one thing I'd, I'd like to try to clarify in the general tone of this conversation. I don't see this as keeping anybody from making, any individual from making their own decisions. This is holding the medical practitioners to account to ensure that they are practicing medicine properly, in accordance with federal law and with all of the codes of ethics of every medical body.
Okay, and you don't think stuff rolls downhill? If they're forced into doing something like that, that the public isn't going to suffer one way or another? I've seen that happen too many times. And my way of thinking, if I show up and read the literature and sit down and pull my sleeve up, I am giving consent. Would you argue with that?
Oh, no, not at all.
All right.
When you allow that treatment to be given, then that is implicitly consent, but I would be concerned that it isn't fully informed consent, which is really the intent of, of this regulation.
You would be concerned? I have not heard anything here that is consistent with the law. It's all your concerns. And you've got the county and the county commissioners hanging on that. That's like, the sky's falling, you know? Everybody's got a lot of concerns, we need some help here. There's too much bad information out there.
John, I don't think he's making his decision based on just, on some whim. He, he references, and it's in every commissioner's PAC, every federal guideline as far as what he's saying that, suggesting that we follow.
I'm not arguing with that, but it's all his concerns. And I'm sure that he has genuine concerns. So do I. I don't think that this needs to happen, there, it's not necessary.
You know, I had after we passed the, not, the first time we went through and passed the not having vaccine in county buildings, I had an elderly man come up to me and he was furious and said, stay out of my business. up to me, um, and he was furious and said, stay out of my business, mind your own business, quit trying to protect me from myself. And that resonated with me, because he said, I'm, you know, I'm educated enough to know what I'm doing and where I can look for information. And I, he said, do you come in and tell me when I take a medication, you know, my heart medication, all the defects that are going to be that? Do I have to sign a consent every time I take medication? And he said, mind, mind your own damn business. And that was very, that was, like I said, resonating. We're trying to protect, protect you from yourselves. And it's, I just think it's, um, we're adults and we need to, um, not have this behind us that dictates what we're, what people are, can and can't do. If they want to look up the federal law and I, we can, we can produce the information, we have it, but to put it into an ordinance or something like that with the civil penalty, I just don't think, I'm sorry, I just, I'm in disagreement of that.
Doctor, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Uh, this is Commissioner Clark. Anytime I go to the doctor and I'm prescribed a medication, the doctor explains it. I've been going to a dermatologist for thirty years. He still says, can you handle the Keflix? So even thirty years of a relationship and the same kind of medication, the doctor still Every time there's a new medication that, that I prescribe, the doctor says, okay, this and this and this are the good sides, but you could have a bad side, a, a side effect. On TV, we see all the time, the attorney advertisements, if you've taken this medication and you've gotten sick. I mean, we're not there yet and the government seems to have fully protected the pharmacies, the pharmaceutical companies by making it, uh, legal, I guess, to sell this and, uh, not know what the side effects are. And the one thing that's the most bothersome is that the bad side effects are never reported on mainstream TV, on mainstream news. You have to listen to the radio, you have to dig, you have to know where to look to find this stuff. So I'm as confused as everybody else, but my job is to protect the county, and that's how I'm looking at this.
I just have one thing left and I'll get out of your hair. That, that's a, that's a good point and that is your charge, and I appreciate that and I appreciate what you guys are trying to do here. But the thing, I guess the thing what it comes down to with most people is just like the gentleman Kathy was talking about and myself. Everything, every time there's a new law or a new push on something to get this stuff in people's arms, it's, it's getting a little tiresome. But what I, all I have to say in closing is, I appreciate your help and what you're trying to do, but I think you guys really need to listen to your constituents out here and, uh, give us a little bit of credit for having a head on our shoulders.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
James Matthews, Lander County resident, voter, and chairman of the hospital board. One thing that this does by representing this as an ordinance or a legal aspect to this thing is, it's a start. What's down the road? It's a start. You started a regulation, so what's down the road? Can't leave the house? We can't go over here? When you start regulating healthcare to people, you cause all kinds of problems, you know? We all watch the news and see what's going on. You take the vaccine, there's possibilities of myocarditis, cellulitis, uh, neurological deeds, orthopedic issues, you know? All these things come with a vaccine. This is a test vaccine. The FDA has not approved this vaccine yet. The only approval they have is for sale in Europe. And they're gonna use up what's available here in the states before they approve this and it's a year and a half away. If people wanna take the vaccine for their own sa- safety, their own thoughts, it's up to them. If they wanna register for, for different things, that's fine, it's up to them. I don't think that the county should be in the health business at all. I don't see anybody up there with a doctor degree. I know you have counsel from a doctor and it's just like John said, it's his concern. This is not something that the county needs to venture off into. Not at all. Patsy brought up the point, so we're gonna have to send a doctor down there when we give a vaccine clinic in Austin and we have to counsel somebody. So we counsel somebody for thirty minutes before they take the vaccine, so we eliminate the people that wanted the vaccine that day. We counsel somebody in our business and we have to, four or five or ten a day. So we eliminate this possibility of the people that want that. So when you continue to regulate stuff and then the next regulation comes down the road, what are we gonna do in the next one? Health concerns is between the doctor and the patient. It isn't between the government and the patient and the doctor. It's between the patient and the doctor. And it's just like Kathy said, don't be regulating my health, I don't need it. I'll take care of myself. Thank you.
Well, in response to that, I appreciate your comments, I would let everyone reflect on the fact that medicine is regulated. A doctor, a medical provider is licensed, and that is because of the potential for harm to occur in the provision of medical care. And as a protection against potential harm with the concerns that come with that, in full, fully informed consent is established in federal and state law as something that is required. This proposal, I appreciate the concerns about the, this being something that adds a new layer, but it doesn't. This only makes sure that the laws that are already in place are being followed. So this does not impact any individual's ability to receive, to choose to receive medical care, but it does ensure that the provision of that care is in accordance with federal and state law. That's all that this is. And I appreciate the emotions that have been built up around this issue. I would suggest that there is no push to have this happen too quickly. We're at a point now of sustainability of the provision of care for this pandemic illness. And this, to me, is the time to ensure that all safety measures are being properly followed. And that is the intent of this regulation, proposed regulation, is just a, a check on that provision of medical care so that we have some certainty that safe practices are being used.
Jason Blake for the record. Um, I've got two points. To this point, um, in our vaccination process, we have followed at the hospital all state and, and federal requirements and guidance that has been given to us. They educated us on this before the vaccine came out and we have followed their directions as discussed. And so I need the public to know that, that we have been following that guidance. Next point of clarification, and this, uh, this regulation is not written, in my opinion, in this fashion. It only applies to county facilities, does not apply to county districts or private facilities, is that correct?
That is my understanding, we do not have authority to go beyond that, in my opinion.
Okay, so the hospital?
The hospital, it's its own district.
Okay.
It's not a county hospital. It's a Lander County District.
Perfect.
Would you agree with that?
I, I do, yes. There is, they are separate, yes. I just wanna make sure of that so that if we continue doing vaccines, um, that we do not have to follow by this regulation.
I don't believe the county has authority, the county health board has authority to tell a district or a private business, uh, what to do, but if it's gonna be carried on in a county building, then, then the regulation would apply. That's, that's my opinion at this time.
Very good, thank you.
I might add too that, I mean, if we, you know, depending on what we decide to do here today, it has to go in front of the state health board, so if they find flaws or holes in it, we'll know about it. But.
I would, I doubt if they were passes.
Yeah, so I, 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 I think this just ties into our last meeting when we were concerned about what's happening in our county buildings. And that's.
That's how I've taken this off. This is applicable to county buildings.
Yeah, I just.
Not, not separate county, uh, districts.
I just don't see how informed consent or giving the patient more information to be able to make a decision, how first off, it's persuading them not to. I would just think that we're, uh, being very cautious, um, because number one, if we're not taking anybody's choice away, if they wanna get the shot, they can get the shot. I mean, it's.
But you're making it more difficult.
Well, if you, if you're saying that by making it more difficult, that we spend a little bit more time with the person to let them understand that the both sides of the coin, I, I don't, I don't believe, I mean, it's like we're using this, uh, the constraints of time and, and manpower as, as like this justification not to inform somebody fully. I, I just, I don't, I just, I don't see that, I don't agree with that.
And I don't think that you guys support.
Come to the front, please.
Just based on this discussion right here, that is not clear, that the hospital is not gonna be included in this regulation. And I take except, exception to it being an ordinance or a regulation. This should be dealt with as a resolution if you wanna do that, but there is so much more discussion that needs to happen about this. And if you haven't read this document, you need to read it because there's.
Which document are you referring to, ma'am?
The, the one hundred and fifty-five page informed consent document that was in your package.
Right, exactly.
Because there are so many inconsistencies and it needs to be clarified and it's an unspoken mandate when you say that all hospital personnel or anybody that administers, this vaccine has to be vaccinated. And what is the penalty if they don't? And what is the penalty if the hospital continues to do this work and the county takes exception to it?
So you're, you're speaking of the penalty that the county could possibly impose based on this?
Exactly, because they're trying to meet a federal regulation. I understand the need to control this, but there's a lot of information in here that is unspoken and not clear, and if we're having that kind of discussion, then you should never approve anything that leaves questions. And I agree that people sixty-five and old, like myself, are probably not gonna go out to the website to find this information, but it is available. And the hospital saying that it's this unwritten mandate and unfunded mandate isn't gonna cause more work, then you have not read this document, because there's a ton of data management and reporting requirements and things that have changed since 2020, I'm sure. And there are, you know, revisions to this document, but it's very unclear how it actually affects me as an individual, and I don't support a mandate. And I don't think the county, Kathy should be involved in it, right? If the federal government wants to make all this available, it's all out there anyway.
I mean, in response to that, it's been brought up a few times in this discussion, is that the county has no right or shouldn't be, but we are part of the health board, the commission.
But you're providing support for the county's liability, correct?
Yes.
And you wanna make sure you're not liable to the state. What about the rest of us?
Dr. Troy, do you care to, do you care to respond?
Well, I'm not sure what the speaker was referring to in regard to people administering the vaccine needing to be vaccinated, that's, that's nowhere in the regulations or laws that I'm aware of.
It's on page, it's on page one eighteen of one fifty-five, sir. It is in your document, and if it gets approved, if this document gets approved, I am to led to believe that everything that is in there will have to be provided for. It is a provision in this document. So I, I invite you to reconsider that and allow for people, I mean, I see this as a mandate for people who are working in the health profession to have to have a vaccine.
No, not at all.
Oh, that's what it states. It says the word will, they will be vaccinated.
Ma'am, will you let him speak, please?
So if you wanna change words, then you can do that, but I invite you to make it clear. Thank you.
No, this deals, this deals strictly with the provision of informed consent. The, the references support the need to provide fully informed written consent. That's what the federal laws refer to, or those references point out from federal law.
And so with this being said.
Uh, and I understand.
I'm sorry, Troy, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead. Oh, no. Uh, so with this, I appreciate that the, the will of the community is not in, in this direction, and that I can appreciate, uh, but I would like everyone to consider that this current vaccination is very poorly understood and the knowledge about the consequences of using this i- is evolving all the time. And I think that it is critical that people who are considering having this treatment done do receive fully informed consent of the current knowledge. And that becomes even more critical as in the very near-term future, this vaccine will be offered to our younger children, five to eleven. That's within weeks of, of happening. And those children deserve to have their parents fully consider the risk along with the benefits of getting this vaccination. And I would ask you all to take into consideration for yourselves in this issue that there are no long-term studies of the effect of these UA vaccines, none. And to Jason Blake's assertion that they are following everything that, that they've been trained on in providing this vaccine, I would ask him, how many pregnant women has his facility enrolled in the registry? I would suspect none. Thank you for your consideration of all those issues.
So before we go any further, public comment?
I actually came today to see if you would go through with this process, how long it would take and if it would impede our getting our vaccinations through the hospital or booster. That was the question I wanted to ask. But I've taken point with something else. I think that, I appreciate the fact that you're looking out for us and I understand your liability issues, but I do, it does concern me that while you're saying you're it's, you're taking care of us, you're pointing us down the road to get immunizations, and we need to get immunizations here. So that concerns me, Art, that you're sending us to Wells or Winnemucca. I have a ninety-year-old mother. She needs to get the vaccination here, and so are a lot of other people that probably have a hard time getting out of town. So every, every person that makes this decision makes it based on them. We're older, we got ours. My mother needs it, she got hers. I have kids in my own family, some of them have gotten it, some are like, we've had COVID, we're not doing it. So it is a personal choice. And I don't really care, I think this is something that's being pushed on us and I don't really like that, but I just wanna know if we can get our vaccinations in Lander County.
There never was, and my example was, no matter what we do, you can always get your COVID vaccine. You can just call the hospital and say, hey, I need a shot. There's phone numbers everywhere. Coming into town, there's a big sign. Nobody's prohibited from getting a vaccine with this ordinance. It's just to protect the county if there's a COVID clinic in the county building. The school district is a separate district, the hospital's a separate district, they can do what they want. The way I understand this from the beginning is to protect the county, that's all, not to prohibit anyone. And my example still stands, you can go anywhere and get a COVID shot. I don't know if they give them at this pharmacy, but they do everywhere else. I don't know if they give them at this pharmacy, but they do everywhere else. All you gotta do is go to the hospital and get your shot. But if you have the COVID, you can't go in that hospital and you can't go in that clinic.
And that's a good thing.
And as far as, as far as having things pushed on you, I can't go in that hospital to get treatment unless I wear a mask. That's a right.
That's a right. And I choose to wear mine. That's a choice. But they have other people that are sick that they have to protect. So they're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place also.
And we're also doing Joyce's.
I would say that, I would say this. If there wasn't big, big, big money behind this COVID stuff, would it still be the same? Follow the money.
Are you one of those people that believes it's not a real disease, that it's just about money?
I've had it. I know it's real.
Well, I think we entered into this-
They got it. And I quarantined for two weeks. I believe it's real. There's no doubt about it.
I believe it's real too. I, I think that we went into this not knowing a whole lot. And I think that we're still evolving. I don't think we know a hell of a lot about it yet. But for me, it's like I have to be cautious. I don't want to make my mother sick. I had surgery last year. It's kind of scary to choose to have surgery and you go into St. Mary's and there's four other people in the ward and you think, did I make the right decision? So we're all making those sort of choices.
But the vaccine doesn't protect you. Every people that, I know two people right now, they got COVID and they got vaccines. So is that a myth? You have to consider that.
There's always, that always is a consideration. But if it keeps me out of the hospital, then it was well worth it.
But you don't know that.
Well, I don't know it till I get it and I don't want to go there either.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you.
This is Catherine. Again, I just have one last comment. I understand that you think that this document is giving informed consent, but it does not.
Sadie Sullivan, just as a resident, I just have a question. A couple of them. One of my questions is, is are we, somebody had just told me the other day that you can go to our health nurse to get a, a vaccine. Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
No, we are not offering the COVID vaccine in community health. It's the routine vaccination.
That's what my question was, is that they were able to go to the health nurse? None of the vaccine for the COVID itself?
Correct.
Yeah, I think every vaccine-
For the COVID itself is to the hospital, not to the- Okay, okay. That was one of my questions for clarification. And the reason why I brought that up is because on this agenda item, it doesn't state county buildings or facilities. So I think that's where there's also, you know, where people, there's, there's not that detail. There's not black and white on this agenda item to state specifically the county buildings. So I think that would have helped matters to know for sure, okay, that it's specifically Lander County buildings. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thanks, Sadie.
Thank you.
Are we ready to go forward?
With that, with what Sadie just spoke of, is there a way that it could be rewritten to make sure there is clarification to where we're not trying to put this on the hospital district, the school district, just basically our county facility buildings?
Yeah, you, you can ask that, that the proposed regulation be modified or amended and then tabled.
Well, not only with that, then Austin no longer has any place to get their vaccines for the people that are bound there. Because where they're getting them now in the county buildings, they're no longer able to get vaccinated in Austin.
That has nothing to do with this agenda.
No, I know. But if this passes, that's what I'm saying, when this passes and the Lander County, you cannot vacci- basically vaccine. If they're volunteering-
If this passes, it, it, it carries no weight. It's up to the-
State board.
The state board of health. To answer that specific question. But you can ask that, that this be amended, however, however you wish it to be as, as the county health board before you. You're just approving it as, you're sitting as a county health board. You're not sitting as county commissioner right now. And there's seven of you on that board, including the sheriff and, and, and Dr. Ross is the chairman. And there's seven of you and you can certainly ask for modifications or clarifications before it's re-submit.
Yeah, I just, I, again, I still hold the position that I don't see a problem with informed consent, making sure people are, I mean, I understand it could possibly cause some more constraints, but it's like, you know, it's like we're talking about choice. What about all these people throughout the country that you will take the vaccine or you won't have a job? That's not a choice. You will wear a mask to enter this. It's not a choice. And it's like it's, it's just, yeah, I just, I just, I don't, I don't see a, I don't see harm in it. I see that it's actually protecting the county.
Kathy, I have a couple of public comments. There's a couple of them, so they all might start speaking at once, once I unmute, so be patient. Kayla, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Kayla Millsap for the record. And I am listening on my phone because I am homesick with COVID. I just want it to be known that yes, my husband and I have been vaccinated. Yes, we do have COVID. But if we were not vaccinated, I cannot imagine how horrible this illness would be.
Thanks, Kayla.
Thank you.
Courtney, go ahead. Courtney, are you there?
She might have unmuted herself.
Okay. I don't know. She must be another caller that's not unmuted.
Do we have others too?
Nope, I was up.
Okay.
As far as the severity of this, of having the vaccine or not having the vaccine, I had, I had COVID. I've not been vaccinated. And it was, I'll, I'll admit, it was, it was tough. Probably the sickest I've ever been in my life. But on the same token, my wife had it three days. So it's like, and she's not been vaccinated. So I think it's, those cases of whether it's severe or not, whether you're vaccinated, unvaccinated, just depends on the person that has it, their immune system and, and those factors. So I don't, to say that the vaccine lessens the symptoms of what you, the COVID affects on you, I don't, I don't know if that's a fair statement because you see it with people that aren't vaccinated. Some have it bad, some don't have it bad, so.
The only thing that I would like to make clear for the public is, is the, my understanding is that the county, and I want to make sure the commission and everybody is on the record with this, that we're not limiting anybody from getting it. We're trying to stop it. Feel free to go get it. If somebody wants to make that choice and they call, I'll give you a ride down there to get the, you know, to get it. No sweat. It's, it's your choice. It's your life. Do as you see fit. And each, each person is individual and, and has their own health concerns or, or risk to consider when, when taking that. The, my understanding of what this is supposed to be, whether it's coming across as this or not, is what this is supposed to be is just making sure that everybody has the facts to date of what is or is not coming in. Jason and, and his staff are providing them facts and, and, you know, and going to do that in the county building, which is what I think Jason was working on this last week, is a consent form that reports to Versa. Then everybody has that. They get handed that sheet. If they care to read it or if they care not to, I don't, I think that that's, that's a personal opinion as well. You know, they make their choice. So is all we want to do is make sure that people have that. We aren't limiting anybody from getting the vaccination if they would like it. We'll drive the bus around, pick them up and drive them down to get it. It's, that's not the issue. Just making sure that the community understands this board is not opposed to it. They're just opposed to people doing it without having full consent.
In one of our buildings?
Yep. In, in a county building. I mean, obviously, obviously at the hospital, they can do whatever. But the, the agenda item doesn't clarify county building. And that, that's why I think that, as Sadie had alluded to, that maybe this appears that the county does not want anybody getting vaccinated when that's not the actual-
Well, because we don't have the right to tell the hospital board what, or the hospital district what to do.
No, we don't.
Yeah. So I think, I think honestly, we just need to make that clarification in this so that it's very clear that that's not what we're trying to do.
Well, I'd also like to do some research. I, I have no idea what, what the hundred-and-fifty-page document the, the, the one woman was referring to.
Was it, was it item, was it number two in the Nevada Legislature informed consent law? Is that what she was referring to?
I was going to ask Dr. Ross on the hundred-and-fifty-page item, is it one of the links that are on the attachment that's in the back up? And if so, which one?
Yeah, I didn't produce that, the, the supporting documentation. I just put the links in. And all of those links go to the laws that support what is specified in this proposed regulation, which is absolutely just limited to informed consent. And I certainly would be happy to entertain amending this so that it is clarified to meet with everybody's concerns.
I think we've clarified some of the questions. However, my still basic concern is the term fully informed consent. And the way it's written, it's understood to me that a discussion of the proposed treatment is had with the patient along with a written documentation of the issues discussed. And I'm going, that's between you and your medical advisor or your physician. But the people that are going to be doing our vaccinations in county buildings will be our nurses and people from the hospital, the hospital staff and such. And they're not going to sit down and do this with a full discussion. And we're going to hand them another piece of paper to say, we want you to read this and sign it before we can do it. And I'm having a real problem with that because we are not complying with a full discussion. And that's still one of my main concerns. The other one is, I, I feel we're overstepping our bounds a little bit. I feel that we've got all the information that we possibly tend to them as far as our health board. And I don't want to see us go any further.
Jenny Martin for the record. There's a couple of things I'd like to say that I probably shouldn't. I do think that this is overstepping the bounds of the board just slightly. Also, it's been referred to a few times, the Nevada legislative informed consent law that's attached as number two, while the link is. It's using a, it's from a legislative session, the seventy-seventh, two thousand thirteen, and it's just the exhibit to the Senate bill. That's been modified and updated by the governor, by Governor Sislak in two thousand nineteen, I believe is the last time. But it's been updated to comply more fully with the federal regulations. So the information that's attached is, isn't even the most updated one. I think this needs to be more vetted and more, the commissioners need to be more informed. And it also needs to not be as vague as it is.
I can't hear you.
It needs to not be as vague as it is. I also do see some hypocrisy with some of the ways that the commissioners vote individually. Whereas you're saying people need to be fully informed on their decisions and that's what you're trying to give them. But yet you guys make decisions for this county where we're not fully informed. And it, it's happened for the last several years. One of the big things that, when you guys first started discussing this, was coming into regulation, the federal regulations, being compliant with them. However, there's other federal regulations that this county chooses not to follow. So I think we need to be more consistent as a county.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
I'd like to see, see us spend some more time on it. Ms. Martin has stated that it's not the most current on the consent law. So I'd definitely like to look into that. And then possibly reworking it to where it's very clear. And then we can have more discussion about it. Then it gives the public more time to be involved with it as well. And I, I don't, it's not a motion. I'm just saying that-
We're tabling it.
Well, Dr. Ross is the chairman. So we need to ask him if you want to table it.
Oh, okay. Dr. Ross, what would you like to do?
Yes, I certainly agree that we should table this and more fully vet it before it is brought back to the Board of Health for consideration.
Okay, very good. This is new, this part of it's new to me. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right. So we're going to adjourn.
And that, that was the one-
The meeting of the-
That was the one item for the Board of Health to consider.
What? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just saying that was the one item to be considered by the Board of Health.
Okay. Are we good to go back out?
Yeah, you can adjourn.
All right. All right. So we're going to adjourn the meeting in Lander County Health Board and reconvene the meeting in the Lander County Board of Commissioners. So we're actually on number four, correct? I'm sure in the right order.
Muted.
For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the planning coordinator job description.
Unmuted.
So we've never had a job description for the planning coordinator. We've had variety pack of different titles, but we've never approved a job description by the commission. So that's what we're doing today.
But we've always been full-time.
We have always been full-time. I am keeping it full-time. It is not moving from full-time. I've advertised for a part-time. That's what we're advertising for. If we're holding the full-time position, if that job takes full-time, then we'll bring it back and rehire for the full-time. The reason for that is- Oh, she's, she's off today. I apologize. But the reason for that is when I spoke to Anna about what jobs have been done when Kyla was here, what jobs were needing to be finished up on and what jobs the next person coming in would, would need to take. It was summed up in, in about two sentences. So I'm not sure that it fully warrants full-time until we get somebody in there and start getting the, the weight of what that really, the full job entails. And then we can kind of progress from there.
Okay, because I'm still confused. We've, we've had, even though we haven't had the description, we've had people in that position full-time for years. And now we're saying we don't think that, that it is a full-time job?
That's, I am, uh-
Yes, what are you saying?
Yep. That's exactly what I'm saying. I can go on further with, with further examples if you guys would like of, of issues we've had in the past that, that lead me to my conclusion. But I think that it's, that it's probably best suited for the county to put somebody in there and let the weight of that job and what they should be accomplishing start coming down until we have a true task list before we fill a full-time position.
Will this person be-
I just, I do need to make the clarification. What's in your packet? It does say a part-time and actually the full-time because that is what I gave for the backup. And she might have got confused because we are posting for the part-time. But the actual job description you're approving is a full-time job description. It's the same-
That's what we're approving.
Oh, I apologize, Ms. Patsy. I had the two mixed up.
So if you, if you decide to approve it, you just say with the modification that it's a full-time.
So I, I apologize, Patsy. I did not, I wasn't-
Okay, well, now I understand. Okay, thank you.
Will this person be responsible for the two-four-seven-seven project? Because we need to get that going.
There will, there'll be a portion of that that they will be involved in, yes.
Specifically assigned?
I don't know that we can specifically assign it because it's going to require attorneys for that.
But we need somebody in the county to run for the county, to the attorneys.
Yes, yes, as a middle, as a, as a liaison, but-
Seven years.
Specifically to answer your question, I've worked with two of the past employees in this position to do two-four-seven-seven. And Keith, I gave them all the information in, for them to do what they have to do. And it's yet to be done.
Yeah, we got to get it done.
So yes, to answer your question, yes, that's part of their duties.
Their roads.
What?
Has to do with roads.
Her question was, what, two-four-seven-seven?
Yeah, she wanted the-
Clarification, what that is.
Laura wanted to know what the two-four-seven-seven roads are.
It's all the dirt roads and the two trucks in the county. And we're responsible to catalog those so that we can protect them.
If we don't, then we, we could lose them. So there's a lot of issues right now with like-
I just know what two-four-seven- All right. Thank you.
Is it open for public comment?
Are we good for public comment? Go ahead.
Sadie Sullivan, just a question here. On this, as far as part-time, full-time, of course, I haven't been in this position. But what my question is, is you can see that we, minutes on our meetings, you know, are very time-consuming. So what my question is, is on this one here for the planning coordinator job description, that is, minutes or transcribing is definitely a full-time. So my question is, is are we caught up on our planning commission meeting minutes or that alone is pretty damn full-time? So that's what my question would be is if we're caught up on those.
So they don't do the minutes for us? We farm them out?
Right. But are we caught up on those? Because we were behind. Because we were behind.
So, I got an email from Paige in regards to that. She's jumping on your commissioner ones to get them caught up, and she's actually recruiting somebody else to get the Lita and the planning minutes caught up. I spoke with her last week.
Okay, and so that's what my clarification was.
Just for clarification, that that job doesn't do the minutes. We call that, that individual...
That they used to, and that's where we got behind on it.
Do you know what I mean? They are responsible for getting them to somebody to do the minutes, but they don't actually do the...
Prior, they were, though, when they were...
Whoa, and I get what Sadie's doing. Prior to that, yes, but when Jan left and Kyla took over the position, Kyla was never informed that she was supposed to actually do the minutes herself individually. That's why they got behind, is what I was informed.
Clarification on that, she received the, from my office...
I was telling your communication.
Yeah, so, communication, my office did tell that individual and told Keith and let them know that the minutes need to be done, because I'm responsible for those lists of those boards, and so she was advised, so, just to let you know. But I'm not disagreeing with you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Sadie.
So, other than the amendment to the full-time, do we have any other comments?
What amendment for full-time?
Yeah, this part. It's supposed to actually say full-time up here.
Oh, the topic?
So, is this Kyla's position that you're talking about? And no one is in this position right now, is that my understanding?
Correct.
But you have two people trying to do her position?
No, so nobody has been in that position for the past three months, I believe. And we've had my secretary assisting Anna and to complete that job for the last three months.
So, Anna's been trying to do two jobs?
No, no. That, so this position currently, and I have an email correspondence to verify all this, just so everybody's clear on this, because I know that that seems to be some of the confusion is they think that some people are doing two jobs. There's been three projects. One was the benches in the, throughout the community, a beautification project on Main Street, and then working with the courthouse in, or the old courthouse there in Austin, which is the kids' club. What's, I'm looking at you, Patsy, because you know the right name.
Youth Center.
Youth Center, youth center, not courthouse. Youth Center, them have been the three things. So, for the last three months, that is what was required of that, what has been lacked on in that job. So, actually, Caitlin has been doing more of the job than Anna. Anna hasn't been tasked with two jobs.
Question. Sadie Sullivan, now, who's doing the business license of that?
Caitlin.
Caitlin's done those as well.
Correct.
Is there any way, this might sound kind of off the wall, but do we have a sign at the water store where they're used to going there to get their business license to put a sign up to state, you know, if you need a business license for the admin or...
Yeah, so the, so the ladies in water and sewer have been just greeting the people there and calling...
The third one.
Yes.
Or the C or whatever have you, just a suggestion, because there is a confusion of who does what, which department you go to. Because the reason why I'm bringing this up, Sadie Sullivan, Landmark County Clerk, is...
That they have to come to my office to get a fictitious firm name that goes along with the business license. And so, anyway, just that extra communication, and that way people have an understanding, because people are shuffling, wandering the halls, where do we go? That's if you're, those gals are busy or at lunch or what have you. So, anyway, that's why I'm bringing it to the attention, is that, just to have that more openness and communication for our public.
Yeah, and Molly with Laura's office is also in Caitlin's absence or Anna's absence. Molly has been assisting with that as well, so somebody doesn't show up here to get a business license and can't find anybody.
Any further discussion or public comment? Our motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the planning coordinator job description with the noted change.
All right.
I'll second it.
So, Brian made the motion, and JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. So, for number five, for grip engineering, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the updated disadvantaged business enterprise DVE program plan for Battle Mountain and Austin airports, and authorize the chair to sign.
Good morning, Commissioner David Meyer for the record, J U B Engineers. So, this DVE program plan is one of the FAA's many requirements. This program plan was last brought before the commission in two thousand seventeen. The reason for the updates are mostly driven by new language in section twenty-six dot twenty-nine, which is marked page five on the bottom, regarding prompt payment mechanics or mechanisms. And then twenty-six dot thirty-seven, monitoring responsibility, pages six through eight, is marked on the bottom. These are already requirements for the FAA. These are in their FAA general provisions that are a part of all of our contract documents. And these pertain to prompt payment between a prime contractor and subcontractors. So, because the DVE program tends to involve subcontractors, the language is also brought into here. There's not anything really erroneous. The biggest thing that came from this is now when we provide payment to the contractors, we ask for signed confirmation of payment to subcontractors within the thirty days allowed by the contract, which is typically our period of payment anyway. So, that's the biggest change in this. Otherwise, the rest is just to update current staff and the current board members. County manager Ramos is the DVE liaison officer. That's kind of been the county manager in the past. So, it's a big document, as all the FAA stuff tends to be, but it's pretty much taken straight out of that forty-nine CFR part twenty-six that it lists at the top of page one. So, and this does need to be signed by the county chair, which is why I'm here.
Thank you, David. We appreciate the update, and I know it's just kind of general housekeeping to approve it. So, I will make a motion that we approve the updated disadvantaged business enterprise program plan for the Battle Mountain and Austin airports, and we authorize our chair to sign.
I'll second the motion.
So, Patsy made the motion, Brian seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I have a page for you to sign that I can bring up.
So, yeah, well, then, for discussion only regarding required upgrades and future consideration of potential commercial services at the Battle Mountain Airport.
So, Commissioner Sparks had asked about this last time I was up. I didn't want to leave you guys hanging too long. I apologize, I don't really have any handouts or presentation, but I didn't want to come empty-handed. So, we kind of talked last time I was here with Mr. Harless, the big driver for an upgrade to commercial service is governed by fourteen CFR part one-thirty-nine, which is just called part one-thirty-nine for short, which is the certification of airports, specifically airports that have any kind of commercial service or scheduled or unscheduled carrying of passengers. So, even airports that don't have, you know, the deltas in the Southwest, but do have heavy shuttling for passengers is covered by this. So, I'm going to preempt this by saying none of this is meant to scare you away. I just want, when Tom and I were here a couple of years ago when we first talked about this, we kind of cautioned not to take the, if you build it, they will come. This is kind of why. If the county is interested in pursuing this at some point, we would definitely recommend trying to find an air carrier first before this level of investment. So, I kind of put these upgrades into three categories, and I'll just go through them quickly. The first is the regulatory requirements. It's the FAA. They have a lot of regulatory requirements, and that doesn't change for part one-thirty-nine. So, there is a certification process. You have to have a certificate. It has to be kept current. It has to be in compliance with this part one-thirty-nine. The FAA has their own part one-thirty-nine compliance inspectors. They can show up at any time. In fact, part one-thirty-nine goes out of its way to saying this includes unannounced visits, so they might just drop in and see if something's wrong. There is self-inspection requirements for a daily, just checking for gravel on the runways, things like that, safety issues, security issues. And then during special things like construction, and then during accidents or incidences. A manual for the airport certification would need to be kept on hand and be a continuously living document. There's twenty-nine elements of that laid out in part one-thirty-nine. I won't bore you by listing those. An emergency, airport emergency plan, so in the incident, or in the event of any incidents or accident, there needs to be an emergency plan to handle those situations, wildlife hazard management, and then a lot of just record-keeping for regular audit, training, inspections, self-inspections, accidents, airport conditions. So, that's the regulatory side. Personnel and training, there's going to have to be a lot more staffing on the county side at the airport, staffing for the terminal building, staffing for airport security, for baggage, for TSA requirements. You would need to have people qualified to run the airport rescue and firefighting, equipment and operations. More staffing for maintenance, you know, the airport out there now is kept up, but not to a part one-thirty-nine level. You know, there needs to be weekly mowing. You need to have onsite marking available, because if markings start to fade, you'll start getting dinged by inspectors. All the part thirty-one, not, part one-thirty-nine airports we work at have staff that have paint trucks, that have paint on-hand and beats and everything, and stencils. The training that I kind of touched on before, there would need to be that airport rescue and firefighting training, hazardous substances and materials, inspection, safety, wildlife, pavement conditions, you know, pavement edges and the surface, weeds, marking, signage, and then, of course, snow and ice control. Because, you know, this is a big county. I know sometimes the airport is not the first thing that needs to be cleared, the roads and the schools and hospitals do. So, there'd probably be some equipment involved with that. So, finally, facility upgrades. The biggest one, of course, would be the airport terminal building with TSA capabilities. Some just quick gut shots on a cost for that, it'd be about twenty million. That's what we've been seeing in places like Yakima. We're working with them, you know, even the smaller airports, you know. We're working with SLC, Salt Lake City Airport. I won't tell you that number. It's a little more than we would need, but they get spending pretty quickly. And there is going to be some struggle for funding that with FAA dollars. Your non-primary entitlements, which are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, would be eligible to go towards that. Obviously, that's a lot of years to get up to twenty million. There is some potential for discretionary funding, but it's likely not eligible as a new airport to receive air carrier service. So, things to think about. Security fencing, your airport's very large. You have about forty-seven thousand six hundred linear feet of fence, almost all of which is four-foot tall cattle fence. So, all of that would need to be replaced with eight-foot security fence. So, roughly about twenty-five dollars a linear foot is another one and a half million. So, that would be a lot easier to get moving up through FAA funding. It's just, all of that stuff still takes time and would have to be probably piecemeal together in more than one project. Aircraft firefighting and rescue, we've actually talked about this before, ways back. The existing fire station probably would work in the interim, but ultimately, you'd need a larger building to house equipment, supplies, everything like that. You'd need one vehicle according to part one-thirty-nine. You could apply for relief from that requirement, but I don't think an air carrier would be interested in coming by if you didn't have onsite rescue and firefight.
Do those have to be full-time on the job of people? Not volunteer?
Those would need to be full-time trained, available, at least through the periods of your commercial service, you know. I don't think you would need twenty-four-hour, but at least they would need to be available for a commercial service. Snow removal and deicing, we kind of talked about. We would need a snow removal building and equipment, place to store sand and deicer, and reliable maintenance of the vehicles. A lot of places have onsite maintenance that wouldn't be required, but you would need to make sure you got people around to take care of them. And then some enhanced lighting and signage for the air carrier services. I did have an air traffic control tower on here. It may not technically be required. The only reason I would propose that as a consideration is given the heavy use of the airport during fire season. It may scare off some air carriers to have to try to fit their way into four, or five, or six MD-eighty-sevens and C-one-thirties trying to land during fire season, especially because they're in a hurry when they're fighting fires. So, it's not on the list, well, it's crossed off the list, but something to consider. So, the only other thing that, of course, I can't, you know, say one way or another, but would probably come up in the early stages, is an air carrier may want some kind of revenue guarantee for tickets that go unsold during the early years of establishing consistent service. So, I know that's something that Elko has dealt with. I know that's something that existed in Winnebago once upon a time. And the one that recently comes to mind is up in Poem and Moscow, mild college thumping grounds. They just recovered air carrier service, but the university's on the hook for every ticket that doesn't get sold, so.
Well...
So, again, I'm not here to try to discourage or dissuade. We just...
We're the tax.
Yeah.
He did a good job.
And I'll probably be here in early December to talk about our next round of FAA projects. If you'd like me to push into anything further, please let me know.
You have our schedule. We have one meeting in December.
Right.
Got it.
Yep, and I'll make sure I coordinate with the county manager and his staff to get on that agenda.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Perfect.
Want to go ahead and take a ten-minute break? All right, for number seven. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the professional engineering services proposal from day engineering for a water treatment plant, phase two, well six.
Where's well six?
That's, no, this is the one here in town. Okay, this is for the contract for phase two on the water treatment plant at well six.
I just had a quick clarification on, if you would, because they said that we already have done some on phase one, but everything that's listed here is the new phase two, right? You didn't recap anything, what we did for phase one. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. When I read the terminology, I said, the area of improvements have been identified as described below, and I thought, improvements that you want to make or improvements that we've made? So, I just wanted to be sure. Okay. Well, I read it over, and I, do you folks have any questions? I don't have any. Well, I did have one, just one on the end. Operations and maintenance manual? I don't know what they cost. Is that what we've paid before? It seems like, I guess, twenty-five thousand dollars for a manual, I just thought.
There's a lot of work put into putting them together.
Well, I'm sure, but you must have some, as you go along, right? I mean, that's what you work from. So, I just was questioning the cost on that.
Marty Golding with day engineering. Yes, this is a costly proposal. It's a multimillion-dollar project, and so the, from day one, I want to reiterate this just, in two thousand fifteen when we started, you had asked if there was a way to save money for the county on the engineering that we were involved in. And so, we do everything on a time and materials basis. So, these numbers are based on a estimated percentage of the estimated construction cost, and I don't think there's been more than half a dozen contracts we've done or less where we've gone to full amount, just because we bill on a time-materials basis. So, I can tell you, I don't...
How do you remember that I asked that?
You asked me if there was a way to save it, and I said...
I do remember, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no.
I say this one as time and materials, too.
So, we do everything on a time-materials basis. So, what I'm saying is, we don't typically realize the full amount of our contracts on most all of our projects, because we don't, we don't bill out that time. As far as the O and N manual specifically, we do have other manuals as templates or on previous projects that we can use, for example, that's true, but it basically comes down to the operations of the treatment plant. but uh, it, it basically comes down to the operations of the treatment plant, contacts, spare parts lists, how the process works, who to contact, and the processes that are involved, and troubleshooting. That's what an operations and maintenance manual is essentially. So, all of those components, it just takes a minute to compile, but um, honestly, it shouldn't be that much.
Okay, 'cause I, I was fine with absolutely essential, but I just, I mean, that amount, I guess because it was listed separately, I just went, wow, no one fooling, 'cause I thought you did it, and you kinda went along and you worked from that too. So, to have it separate, I just, anyway, thank you, no, I'm, I'm fine with it, Marty, and time and materials.
Any other questions? No, no comment?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the professional engineering services proposal from Day Engineering for our water treatment plant phase two, which is well six, um, not to exceed the professional services fee of two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Second? Patty made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, you should have, um, that form, I'll go to the next one, okay.
It's an amended agenda that should have been replaced the agenda that's in the packet, so that's the current agenda.
Request form.
Request form.
Uh, sorry, request form, yes.
Yeah, but what's, what's different?
There's slight difference. Bec- the difference is, Commissioner, that in the, in the first one, uh, they were asking to make a ded- for us to accept the dedication deed and to give, to give easements. Well, easements have already been given by the prior owner, so we can't give easements that already exist, so we would.
So, it's the wording?
Yes.
It's the wording in the middle?
Right.
Gotcha.
So, so we, that's why we added, Laura added, deed will be subject to existing recorded easements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the transfer parcel zero-zero-two-dash-two-zero-zero-dash-five-seven, um, Super Eight Drive from Cheryl Horton Smith, trustee of the Clinton Family Trust, and Louis M. and Sally Lemare, trustees of the Lemare Trust in Lander County, and request that the District Attorney's Office to draft the deed which is subject to existing recorded easements and authorize the chair to sign.
Laura Duval, Lander County Assessor, for the record. This, and you have a parcel map, um, in your packet, and also the letter requesting that this parcel be gifted to the county. A little bit of history, this is something that Lou Lemare has been wanting the county to take over for a very long time, um, it just kind of, it, it didn't get followed through, and so, um, the successor trustee of the Chilton Trust, which is their daughter, contacted us and said, can we please get this finalized, uh, and get it transferred to the county? For whatever reason, she said she's not sure, her parents are both deceased now, and she's not sure, um, why they did it as a parcel instead of an actual roadway easement, 'cause it is Sunset Drive, excuse me, it's Super Eight Drive, I apologize. Super Eight Drive, and it goes along McDonald's back to the Super Eight, and then there's a big chunk of parcel back there that's for sale, that there could be further development and stuff. There are existing easement agree- agreements, um, that are recorded for McDonald's and Super Eight to drive down that Super Eight Drive. What's interesting is, this part is already done as Super Eight Drive, it's just this piece up here that fronts Boil's Ranch Road and then goes to the very end of McDonald's property there. So, they want to just transfer this parcel to the county, um, it needs some maintenance. So, yeah, we're not gaining a lot, other than we're gonna have to maintain it, but it's kind of a public thing and it's a, it's a well-traveled road, so it needs to be transferred to the county. So, I, I told them that, you know, I would get with the District Attorney's Office, get them the copies of the existing easements, and then they can draft the deed, and then they would sign it, and we would have it recorded if you guys agree to accept this parcel.
And, and as Laura points out, uh, this is one-hundred percent for the purpose of maintaining that road. Right now, it's not maintained. So, if we accept the, the dedication deed, uh, which is subject to exist, the current existing, uh, easements, then, uh, then we would have the legal duty to maintain it at that point.
So, if this was recorded under their parcel?
It was.
Were, have they been paying taxes?
Yeah, but the taxes aren't, yeah, they've always paid taxes on it, yes. But it's, it's, it's road, but it was, it was mapped as a parcel instead of a road. And again, she said she doesn't know why her dad did it that way, if it was just a goof, or if there was some intent, she said, there's no way to know now, 'cause they're gone, to ask them. He, he was an engineer, uh, Chilton Engineering out of Elko. So, she thinks there may have been a reason, not sure, because this map has been amended over the years because more parcels have been split. It's the Battle Mountain Square, um, development there, that commercial development where McDonald's and Mills and all of those, um, you know, uh, Super Eight and all that is, and so, they just wanna get this, you know, taken care of and wanna transfer it to the county. She feels like, and so did I, that it should have probably been done as a road in the beginning, but I think what happened was McDonald's didn't exist, Super Eight didn't exist, and as those got pieced out, um, and parceled, somehow this piece just didn't get changed at that point in time, is what we're guessing, 'cause it probably should have been a, uh, an access road easement dedicated at the time that the parcel was, you know, the parcel map was, was, um, was done, and there's been several subsequent maps. So, she thinks it might have just been just a fluke thing. So, this is just a way of just the county, you know, taking it over, and, um, that way they can maintain it.
Well, Laura, it, it, aren't the dimensions of that parcel the same as if it were a road easement?
Yes.
So, I just wanted you guys to know that.
Yes, mhm, yeah.
Any other questions? Other comments?
I think it's generous.
Attorney?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer parcel two-dash-two-hundred-dash-fifty-seven, Super Eight Drive from Cheryl Chilton Smith, trustee of the Chilton Family Trust, and Louis M. and Sally Lemare, trustees of the Lemare Trust, to Lander County, and request the District Attorney's Office to draft the deed which is subject to existing recorded easements and authorize the chair to sign.
Have a second? All right, Brian made the motion, do you have a second, call it favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
For Summit Engineering, um, for number nine, update from Summit Engineering on the progress made on the current project pursuant to the agreement between Lander County and Summit Engineering with the effective date April fourteenth, twenty thirteen, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, the continuation or termination and/or modification of the existing contract between Summit Engineering and Lander County on the Austin, um, Town Boundary Realignment Project.
They're not, are they on the phone or anything?
They may be on the phone, I'm not sure.
Is there anyone from Summit on the phone? No.
Well, I'm about had it with Summit personally. Twelve, twelve years into this?
Muted.
One-point-two million dollars.
Unmuted.
I guess, um, I, I think we certainly all agree, we've, we've been upset for some time, but I don't know about jumping ship at this late point, um.
Yeah, I, that's why, that's why it's so setting, to finish it, you hire somebody else, I mean, it's gonna be a significant amount of money to finish it, but it's like, these guys have had twelve years, it's like they're just dragging us down the road, you know?
And it has to be figured, I didn't understand exactly until a week ago, Bert actually explained to me what, I mean, I had the, uh, figure of understanding it, but I had no idea that what a qua- quantity that causes Austin for residents for selling property and doing all that stuff.
Oh, you couldn't sell it.
I had no idea, I didn't understand that part of it, I just didn't, and I just think that the holdup, um, the way they wanna try to go about it is, that's never going to happen. Um, they're not gonna get people to sign things over and, you know, all be in the room at the same time to sign things over, that's never, just never going to happen. So, I just think that we need, unfortunately, we need to do something for Austin for the residents, and I don't think Summit Engineering is it, unfortunately.
Yeah, improve another twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I just, uh, you know.
To the total.
Well, before we, we not do it, I think we certainly need to ask some professional people what they could do it for, and would they come in in the middle and take over something like that? Aaron, have you looked at any of this? Do you have any ideas for us? 'Cause I, I don't.
I mean, what?
I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't wanna pay more to get it done to someone else, but I mean, and I just want it done, I mean, but.
Absolutely.
What, what's the smart way to do it?
Uh, Aaron Martinez, AM Engineering for the record, um, to answer your question, Commissioner, I think, um, you're exactly right to be apprehensive. You know, you have such a lo- long-term investment, frankly, here, in the millions of dollars, on an initiative that has not seemed to satisfy the commission, and so to, like you said, to jump ship, to try to go a different route is a, a big undertaking, absolutely. I will say that the right answer to that, I can't give you, 'cause that's not my position to be in, but I would say that, um, it's, um, under the engineering code of ethics, we have a very specific way of how we speak about other engineers and the manner in which we do so, and so I would say that, um, Lander County has paid AM Engineering to look at this project in a couple of different fashions, and under that paid purview, I can offer an opinion of what I've been able to see up to that point. I think it's a little, um, my first off-the-cuff apprehension is, you know, it's been nine, ten, eleven years, however long it's been, and we haven't had one map submitted, and so I find it as kind of a small fallacy that all of a sudden, we're at this hyper-drive mode of creation of maps within the next thirty days. So, that seemed to me to be a little bit of a, a far stretch, because if we were able to output maps in a thirty-day spectrum, why wasn't that occurred in year eight, or year nine, or year ten, or, you know, why wasn't that occurred thirty days ago? And I think since your last commission meeting, thirty days has transpired, and I feel like, you know, why haven't we seen something in that regard? I think it's blatant disrespect that they haven't attended today, I'm kind of curious as to why we're not hearing from them. My firm has been asked to kinda look at this from a holistic approach, and I think that it would be a, a massive undertaking to switch, uh, and try some, another firm. It would be very expensive, but I think that the approach that's outlined currently by Summit has placed the county in a significant predicament. Some of the things that I had heard under the testimony from them in the last commission meeting seem to be placing liability elsewhere. I'll give you a few examples of that. The first liability, uh, is that they would not like to create the deeds for this project. Most of the time, uh, in my profession, we hire our own counsel to create those deeds, and then we present them to the county commission, who ultimately accepts those deeds. They were asking the county DA to create those deeds, which I thought was not only a conflict of interest, but also not in the best interests of the county. If there's an error created in those deeds, all of a sudden, the county is now responsible for this endgame task, so I felt the county was at liability there. I also think that the county's at liability for taking on the undertaking of the signing of the maps. In the last testimony provided by the engineer, they stated that Lander County would be the ones to chase down the signing of the maps. Again, a relinquishment of liability, that's probably one of the most crucial components of the project. If I can't get someone to sign a map, how are we gonna record the map? Now, there's, you know, again, more placement and blame on Lander County. The last and final point was, in the testimony from the last meeting, they stated that they would, um, not like to potentially stake out the property boundaries, and they were maybe, uh, hinting of someone else doing the actual field survey of staking out the final corners. Again, another relinquishment of liability, why would you not wanna stake out your own boundaries that you've been working on for twelve years to create? So, I absolutely think that, um, there's definitely a different way to approach this, and, um, in terms of how that would go, I think it would have to go in a much different route than it currently is. I think it would take significant funding to do it properly, you would have to, um, not only get a, a consultant, but a secondary consultant that would review that consultant, and then third, you would need, the third component would be a lawyer team that would have to help execute, um, these deed documents and ultimately, the execution of signing those deeds. And so, with that, that's about the best opinion I can give you.
Wow, um. Um, yeah, thank you, um, so much. Uh, actually, I can remember some of those initial meetings, and, um, they weren't commissioner meetings, so they wouldn't be in the minutes, but we actually met with title companies, and I know our planning person at the time was Jan Morrison, and Jan was very specific about, uh, the information that you just mentioned they should be doing, that they're throwing away their liability. We did not say we would do that at any time that I, I can remember, and I don't believe, and, and we can still, I, I would say even make a call to Jan to, uh, to verify that, but that I'm sure that was all part of the initial, 'cause I can remember our title companies coming into those meetings that we, that we had.
I can verify what you're saying, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, so now, everything that they said, that you just reiterated, they told us last meeting, and now they put down in writing, we will not do this, we will not do this, and we recommend you get somebody local to save you some money on the, the staking it out. Okay, well, uh, we don't wanna jump ship, but, um, we definitely then are not happy about this letter, right?
Well, and I think we could continue to throw good money after bad.
Exactly.
And I, before I was even on the commission, for years, when I would come to meetings and they would come in to do presentations, it was the, I, I've heard the same exact story every single time that they came in to do the presentations for the same exact excuses of why it's not where it's at, for those, and I wasn't even on the commission.
Well, it was Hughes for two or three years.
And so, and nowhere, and so we keep throwing money after money, and they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that, and they're gonna, I just, I, you know, for the citizens of Austin, I think that they deserve to be able to have their, have this done correctly, and unfortunately, we have to pay the money to do it and get it done right, that we do that instead of, 'cause if not, we're just stuck in this same, you know, look another fifteen years from now, and you guys are gonna come back and you're gonna be in the same spot you are, paying them all of this money and not doing anything.
And another hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, for what? To say for some more excuses of why it's not done, or why the county should have to do this or do that?
Right, but, uh, what, and, and my concern, and that's why I, I asked Aaron, for another company to come in, they'd have to do so much more research, I don't know, I mean, even, even if someone gave them every paper that they had, it would cost us probably a fortune for them to, just to bring them up to where we are today. So, I'm real concerned about the jumping ship, and I, and I agree, I don't wanna pour mu- bad money after more bad money, but on the other hand, we have to, we have to pull them up, I'm, I, I won't accept this.
Well, exactly, we don't accept, accept what's in front of us, and then we solicit some, some estimates.
But, but, do we, are we fed up where we wanna go brand new, and would somebody even take on a job like that?
For the right price, anybody will, Commissioner. For the record, Aaron Martinez, I wanted to make one final point that I didn't, uh, have a chance. If, whatever your decision is, I think it would be in your best interest, if you did think about switching, that you would request that Summit work with that other firm, because you're exactly right, you do not wanna lose the one million dollars that have gone into this, whether that's worth it or not. So, there's very specific items that would need to transpire, one of it would be that they work with the future firm, if that's what the co- uh, commission chose, so that you didn't lose that component of the investment. To answer your question as to how much would need to be recreated, I don't know anyone that would adopt someone else's work without going through it with an absolute fine toothcomb, so I'll reiterate that, yeah, this undertaking would be a very expensive one, most certainly. Um, but again, kind of how I'm seeing things outlined right now, you have a hundred-plus-thousand-dollar proposal in front of you that is not an endgame, it's still not guaranteeing you're gonna actually go through with anything, and that's, seems to be like you're hanging out there without the, the approach of the consultant to drive you through the signing of the maps and ultimately, the recordation of those deeds, and so I think you're, have a proposal in front of you that is still not an endgame product.
And I know we never agreed to that.
Commissioners, Eric, Aaron's, I have a question from a strictly legal standpoint.
I would recommend that you terminate, uh, the services of Summit, just based on the proposal, because they're not proposing to finish the project. They're proposing to do a small aspect of something when their contract, they're contracted to finish the project. So, now they're. So now they want to modify it. So to not finish the project. And that, that's absurd from a legal point of view. So my advice is, is any company that does that, when they're in a written contract to complete certain services outlined on paper, and then they want to modify it after eight years of not successfully doing that. They want to modify it and said, well, if you pay us a hundred and something thousand dollars, we won't finish the project, but we'll just do a small aspect of it. That's absurd.
And not only that, he has said, the gentleman that comes in has said, you know, I want to retire, I want to retire. So I might, I might do work on it a day here and a day there, for the love of Peter. I mean, this is craziness. And it needs to be done. I mean, that's the bottom line, it has to get done. Unfortunately, it's too bad that it's so far out that they weren't terminated before.
So what actually have they accomplished so far?
We have no idea.
Cause we don't have any maps. Or well, maybe the one that we got the last time when they, so I, you know, is there a motion? I think we just need to go.
Yeah, they've taken our money.
The motion to. Any public comment, anything like that on this project?
Can you get any money back? I mean, can you like, I don't know, put a lawsuit out there and say you didn't do the job you said you were going to do? And it's been this long and.
No, that was my question.
I mean, what, don't, isn't there something you can do?
I don't know, that hurts.
And if we terminated them, how, how could, how could we make them insist that they work with someone new? They might just go, here's your stuff, you know?
But they didn't live up to their contract, correct?
They haven't provided, when we asked them for a copy of everything, they gave us a box of nothing.
Is there a timeline on this contract?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
That we want.
So I mean, can't you breach a contract?
Well, we can certainly, you know, consider that, but, but.
I thought it was written in a way it was time of materials or something.
No, we're not going to successfully win the way that contract is ordered. But to continue on it is absurd.
Well, there's always a time to cut your losses. If you feel this is it, then how do we do that? Do we have you write the letter, counselor, and say?
Well, it starts right here on this item, that we make a motion to terminate.
You have to write the contract?
Yeah.
I mean, we've been asking them what it would take to finish it. And this is what we got. And they're, they're not, like Erin said, they're not finishing it. They're just continuing on and continuing on. And we'll have a few milers and a few maps, maybe, if we can get them to sign them personally. But that's unacceptable. Can we tell them this is totally unacceptable?
That's going to say when you cancel their contracts, going to pretty much push that point home that it's unacceptable.
Well, my recommendation is that, that you, that you propose an order for the termination of the existing contract between Summit Engineering and Lander County on the Austintown Boundary Realignment Project. And, and in that termination, you request a copy of all products and services and anything that comes out of that to be given to the county. That's my recommendation legally.
And would we do that before we try and get somebody else to take it over? Or are we just going to be stuck with nothing?
We're going to, we're stuck with nothing now. I mean, I have to be honest with you.
Yeah, but we must be closer, we must be closer than we were before.
If we give them more money, they'll give us a map that they promised us eight years ago, Commissioner. That's where we are. So we, we can't, we can't look at other options until we decided what to do with this one. So the first step is to terminate the contract, if that's the, the approach you want to take. And then to, to bring back in two weeks, other people, other outfits, and give us a proposal. And, and start it. And have it done right. There's no way this project should have taken eight years. And now they said they'll do it, but the counties, you got to take all the liability and do all the work, which we're not set up to do, either legally or, or in, in the admin department. We're not set up to do that.
But that wasn't part of the agreement.
It was part of the agreement.
So, okay. Do you want to have a motion?
I'm open.
You want to make the motion, Hakey?
Man, not really. I, I, I think I'd, I'd take the slippery way out. And I'd ask our DA to, to go back and say, this is totally unacceptable. This is not our contract. You're pushing all the liability on us. This is your responsibility. We expect you to step up, give us all of your information, and tell us how you are going to complete your contract. And I guess I would rather see that. I mean, then I would just terminate. I'd like to go back and. Legally, I'd like, I'd like to call him on the carpet first.
Okay, that's noted. I'll make a motion that we disapprove the continuation and for the termination. How do you want me to word that again, Ted?
That you make a motion to terminate the existing contract between Summit Engineering and Lander County on the Austintown Boundary Realignment Project. And to provide the county with all the work that they have completed and we paid.
So my motion will reflect what the counselor just stated.
All right, for a second, I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Did it pass?
Aye.
That passed?
Yeah.
All right. So, report to the commission on that conversation, do the paper ballots, and another, oops, another manufacturer of electronic voting machines. After report, Lander County Board of Commissioners to discuss and take action to approve or disapprove of one of the above options for future elections. You are on.
It's still morning time, I guess. Good morning.
Morning.
Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk. I thought I had hit send on the email last night for some information. And I actually, for whatever reason, it didn't go through. And so it came through to you guys this morning. And then it was also sent down to Michelle in Austin. On those, I believe there was a quote from ESNS. Corrected me if I'm wrong. And I did get this morning information from ESNS as far as some facts that they have as far as their company. I've been working with Chelsea Machado with ESNS. And also Brian Hoffman is on the line. He's the vice president with ESNS. There's two companies that are certified through the Secretary of State, which is Dominion and ESNS. Richard had emailed out to several other company that is certified through the EAC. They would have to become certified through the Secretary of State. And that could possibly take up to six months. And only one company has responded at this time. And I'll let Richard give you a little bit of information on that. And I believe he, did you send the email to the commissioners as well?
Yeah, prior to, at the same time as I sent out to the several other vendors that are out there that do this kind of work and then make these kind of offerings. I've only got a response from one out of seven. And they were apprehensive as well because it's kind of a sticky situation. They don't want to get involved in something. So that's the reason I probably doubt, no response from any of the other vendors is they either consider this, this is just what I think, may not be fact. But consider us too small or too touchy of a subject, and they don't want to get involved in it. So which reverts back to Voting Works was the only one that responded. And it would take them six months to get a certification in state and Nevada and order to be able to do elections through their systems. So that leaves us ones that are already certified here. That would be ESNS and the other company that you guys want to do away with. So that basically leaves us with ESNS unless we do a recertification of vendors. And I'm sure we might get a response, but I haven't as of yet with from the other ones.
I had asked Sadie, as far as the governance of having to go with a certified, somebody that's been certified by the Secretary of State, is that something that's, that we're guided by NRS on or?
Oh, I believe Sadie Sullivan, for the record, that was one of the emails that I had forward was from Mark. And the, all the steps that went through, that is required through the federal, the state, and then the county. And so there's that timeline. Like I said, it just already.
And we haven't got, you haven't got an answer back yet from?
Yeah, this morning, I believe, as I forward. That may be the one that I had sent you. There's been a lot of emails back and forth, but I believe that is this morning, that had gone out to you. And then the other thing that Brian had asked as far as having ESNS have some type of statement or letter that's asking, you know, if there's any involvement with, with any other company or anything like that, that they're, they're sole individual company. And so that's when I had gotten the email from Chelsea Machado from ESNS. And that can answer some of our questions. There was something else I was going to tell you, and I can't think of it at the moment.
What other counties use, in the state, use the ESNS?
I believe it's Carson City. I have Mark from the Secretary of State on, is that correct? It's Carson City?
Yes, ma'am, just Carson City.
Okay, so who's on the phone?
That is Mark with the Secretary of State.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then I also have Brian Hoffman, that's the vice president of ESNS, that's on there as well, if you have any questions.
Okay, yeah, one of, one of my main questions is, it's an American company, right? And, and where is their software developed? I mean, that was the whole perception of Dominion, was their software and their connection with China and all these other things. And I'm going, so are, is it a totally owned company by American people? Or is it owned by other corporations that are dummy corporations, et cetera, et cetera? And we'd like to know who we're dealing with.
And we have Brian, are you on the line, Brian Hoffman with ESNS? Are you there?
This is Brian Hoffman. I am vice president of sales for election systems and software. And in answer to the question regarding ownership, ESNS is owned by the McCarthy Group out of Omaha, Nebraska. Mike McCarthy is the largest shareholder of ESNS. The remaining shares of ESNS are owned by senior level of management at the company. Regarding the question on software development, our primary location for software development is, is indeed Omaha, Nebraska. And we have another software development site in Rockford, Illinois. But 100% of our software development is done in the United States. We do not source out any of our software for more development.
He's stating. This is Sadie Sullivan for the record. When you do talk again, Brian, if you could speak up, he's stating that it's in Nebraska and Illinois, is that?
Yeah, Omaha and Nebraska.
Correct, all software is, yeah, Omaha, Nebraska, or Rockford, Illinois.
So Illinois and Nebraska is where the software was created, it's not done, it's all done in the United States.
Okay, and it's, it's not owned by a dummy corporation and layers and layers of, et cetera? Is, is ESNS owned by, what, stockholders or?
Well, he said the biggest stockholder is the one gentleman that has the majority of it, and the rest are the other people within the company.
Yeah, could you state those names for the record again for us, Brian? It's a little bit hard to hear.
Brian, are you there?
I'm sorry, I was muted, I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
The, the primary ownership is the McCarthy Group out of Omaha, Illinois. The largest shareholder of the McCarthy Group is Mike McCarthy.
And just to let you guys know, I was very appreciative of ESNS to get to us as quickly as they did. There is early vote that's going on. So ESNS is extremely busy and has their staffing, you know, out in the field and what have you. And then also for the next November meeting, they will still be finishing up or helping assist. And so the, the staff is extremely busy at this time. It was commented that if we did need them to come in December, that may be a possibility. But that's why they have not been able to make it today. From my understanding, it's just the elections are going on in, in other counties and, and states. And so they are definitely busy at this time. But they definitely reached out to us very quickly.
So I would like to know on the security part, because one of our concerns is, is the hacking that can be done, of course. So what kind of security? And have you tried to hack it and been successful? Or have got your action in place to take care of that or any problems?
Is that question directed towards me?
Yes, please, Brian.
Yeah, okay. We take security extremely serious at the election systems and software, specifically to our equipment and software, but also to our facility. In fact, three and a half years ago, we hired a senior vice president of security, somebody who recently was in Washington DC. And he has made sure that we've done all efforts to have our equipment and facilities be secure. And if there was a, if there was a need, I could bring him either into Lander County or have him on the phone for a future meeting. And he can talk about the specifics of that.
Thank you, Brian. Sadie, so on, on this quote, this is for the purchase order of one machine?
This quote is from A to Z. Basically, what we have right now is, we had ADS, and they are our voter registration main. Database. And once ADS went ahead and retired, then Dominion and VOTEC had worked together. And so VOTEC is our company that we have for our, our day-to-day database of our voter registration. And so ESNS will have, beginning to end, it'll be their voter database all the way to the end. And there won't be, you know, two companies that are being.
Okay, so this starts it. But what do we do as far as the electronic voting machines?
Everything, from what I can tell, and I need to go through it more. And then also touch base with Ted on it, because like I said, this is something I just emailed out. I believe this one was emailed, but it's something that I want to touch base and, and, you know, go through it.
Would it fall within our budget then?
No. No, because we didn't plan on buying new election equipment.
No, but we're canceling our contract with Dominion, right?
Right, but that was just an annual, so this is machines, this is a whole new voter registration. So absolutely, I do not have the funds for this, because you're going to purchase.
So it's just the annual that we're saving?
Correct, correct.
Dominion isn't taking back any of their machines or anything?
Correct.
We're just scrapping them?
Well, they'll be in our possession until that time period's up. And then at times, there are some, there's companies that will give you monies for them, and then they go and refurbish them. So we could look at that at that time.
Thank you.
After the 22 months is after the election, correct?
Correct. Do you have anything on, or do you guys have some questions?
So Sadie, back to that original question I asked, so being that we have here with a company that's been certified by the Secretary of State, is that governed by NRS? Did you answer that question or are you waiting to get an answer back to that question?
No, we did get it, Mark, if you're available on that email that got sent out last night, could you answer Mr. Sparks' question? Cause there's federal that they have to, there's the federal, then there's state and those states would be NRS and then also the county. So there's the guidelines all the way through.
Let me just get where, I'll lead you to where I'm going with it.
Okay.
Is that, because we asked for you to bring back electronic forms and paper ballot forms that we can decide on. But if I'm hearing correctly is that there's only two systems that are certified by the State Secretary's Office and none of them include a paper ballot system.
They both include a paper ballot system, yes, so this quote will be paper ballot.
Got you.
As well, so this is electronic and paper ballot.
Thank you, thank you.
And that way we'll be covered federally and state.
Got you, perfect.
Mark, is there anything that you would like to comment on that or help us understand?
But Mark Vlachin for the record, Sadie, thank you, but you are right that the two systems are state and federally certified pursuant to federal and state laws, correct?
And they're both capable of doing the paper.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments, Richard Green for the record. As what I'm gathering from some people, they would like to have an exemplary voting experience, whatever is decided here. It looks like it's pretty much this one or nothing. But I believe with, with what, with the cards that were presented, I think we can have this done in a way where it would be beneficial for everybody to be able to see this as a change and as a positive change and regain, if they've lost any, trust in the system. By going to this, I believe that if you, if you do this change, it will mark to anybody involved and anybody that sees it as an integrity thing. And that you are doing what you guys have set out to do with this challenge. And as, on the technical side of this, and I can provide everything to everybody in a way where, depending on whatever level of understanding that you have, I can provide it in a way where you would understand it and have a comprehensive understanding of it. Where like a very smart person said to me, if you can't explain it to a five-year-old, you don't know your job well enough. So not being demeaning, I'm just saying, if you can't, then you don't know it. So I would, I would provide comprehensive stuff so everybody here would be able to understand it. And anybody that was voting would be able to understand it, so they know exactly what they're, and they have confidence in the system that we provide.
Any more questions?
Do you have any recommendations?
Well, you can not pass them and, and then what are we going to do? We're, we're out of time, basically. And so we did speak with Ted and we don't have the time, you know, this should have been done, you know, a few months ago or what have you. It was not, and so as soon as, the sooner this can be approved and we can move forward, then, you know, we're, we're having to learn a whole new system. Our day-to-day things, our reports, our electronics, for voting, the paper, everything. So we would, you know, immediately, well, we've been in touch with ESNS and so.
Do you feel comfortable with them? I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Yes.
Can you, can work with them comfortably?
Yes.
And Richard?
Absolutely, I have a lot of confidence in this because it's an end-to-end. It's not compartmentalized, it's A to Z like she said, which means they provide everything, they come in and it's easy.
Yeah, instead of having the two different companies.
And they're a closed system?
Absolutely, it's more closed than the other one.
Could you explain that to them?
Yeah, because the only interface it would have to anything online is when it's transmitted to the state.
But we'll have a record of written.
Paper, you would have a paper one, and yeah, locked up. So yeah, it'll have whoever and whatever they voted locked up. So if there's an audit, you're like, oh, that wasn't right, you have tangible, put your hands on, count it.
Legally, I think we have to proceed with something, we have to make a decision today.
And then Mark, we'll have some comments for you from the Secretary of State as well, whatever's best for you guys and for him as well.
So do you have a motion?
I do have a public comment on Ms. Corey Warwick. For the voting process, please consider moving the vote to a special board meeting when more people can attend, not during normal business hours. Or consider holding a town hall on pros and cons of paper versus machine and/or offer different options before voting on an option. As a voting citizen, I would like to be informed better and then be able to give input to our representatives.
Which where our back is against the wall.
Right, and so just to comment on that, Corey, is that correct?
Correct.
So with that being said, we will be following, you know, of course, all state, federal, county guidelines. And so they will be able to come in and be able to vote and then have that paper ballot in hand. And so that will not be being taken away from, and so that does need to be clear for all my voters that do have a concern, they want to be able to come in. That will still be available, we'll be following all guidelines and so.
Hey Sadie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a hybrid, correct? This is electronic and paper. Is it, I just want to make sure that that's.
So what will happen is with the Assembly Bill AB 321, everybody will get their mail-in ballot. They will still get that. When they come in for early voter the day of, they can bring that ballot, surrender that ballot, they will still go to a machine, they can go ahead and do the voting. The ballot will print out, they will take that to, and that's all offline, take it to another machine. And at that time, they put that paper ballot in there and it, and it will come up that your ballot has been cast. So they will have an actual ballot in hand versus with the other, where it was, you know, on a roll, yeah, on a thermal roll per se. So did that answer your question, Bert, on that?
Yes, partially, I just want to make sure that the public knows that it's not just paper or just electronic, it's.
It's both.
It's both, and that, that's all I was trying to clarify for the public.
Yeah.
Bottom line is you'll have a record of both after the election. You'll have all, stack the paper ballots and the electronic, correct?
Right, because the, yes, I could go detail, but it'll get confusing, so.
So you stated that for AB 321, everybody gets a mail-in ballot, so when they come in, they can surrender that ballot, you said can.
That's just like.
So what if somebody comes in and they don't bring that ballot?
So they have a form, just like in the general that they sign off, like I lost it, I did, they have to check the box and state that I'm returning it. Or it's, I don't remember the wording, do you remember the wording on it? But anyway, basically they have to fill out the form and then sign off. And so then that is, we have to go into the system, tell them that they've turned it in or they didn't have it to turn in. And then that allows that to open up to be able to go.
It's just like we did in the last election.
Yeah, it'll be identical to the general.
Peggy Solomon for the record, Mark, are you still online?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, what is the, the surrendering of the ballot, wasn't there something new that came about that?
Through the legislature, is that true?
There were provisions in Assembly Bill 321 where we will stamp canceled on ballots that are turned in to the clerk uncast.
Okay. So they use a machine and they bring their ballot in, it's initial canceled on it, so it can't be counted twice?
Correct.
Now, if we, if we decide to do this today, you said that they could come out in December and actually give us a demonstration, like after our meeting or something?
I'm hoping, I just got Brian's contact information this morning. And so Brian, I believe we had a tentative date that we had gave Chelsea to pass along to you, is that a possibility?
Yeah, we, we would do that, even if I was unavailable, we would have somebody that would be able to come out and do it. So we can, we can commit to that.
And what date would that be?
I think, is there just one commission meeting in December?
Eighteenth in December.
The eighteenth in December, so it'd be that, sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Eighteenth next month.
Oh, eighteenth next month.
Well, it'd be.
Sixteenth of December.
Sixteenth of December.
Sixteenth of December.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Even if we vote, even if the commission votes to go with them, that's as soon as they can come out?
Correct, because they have elections going on currently in all other states and.
Is that enough time for you, for them to get all the systems in place?
I don't know if we'll necessarily have all the system in place, but at least they could come and do a demonstration. And then that way people could see it, I can touch base with them and see if there's something to where we could go into an evening to where that way those people that are working, that they can come and physically see, you know, what, what they will be expecting to have.
It wouldn't have to necessarily be on our agenda.
Yeah, basically, so people can come, can see that.
Yes, and so if, if they're willing to, you know, step up and do that, I am more than willing.
Okay.
And it'd be very beneficial for everybody.
I agree. So any more comments?
Mark, did you have any more comments before, or do you want to wait for their motion and then comment?
Yes, ma'am, I can comment now, it will be quick. I did want to clarify that the two state-certified systems here in Nevada are both American-owned with no ties to China or any other foreign ownership. Neither uses software built or maintained overseas, and we know that for a fact because the certification process that I described in my email to you yesterday is an extensive and detailed process. That process requires and ensures that no systems have motives in them, that these systems are able to be audited and a number of other very technical procedural and mechanical requirements are met. That process is in place because our process, our electoral process is sacred and every one of us wants our vote to count and not allow any illegal votes to be cast. If there are any questions on that certification process in the email I sent to you, Ms. Sullivan, please let me know and I am eager to discuss it at length.
Sadie Solomon for the record, I'm going to have Richard go ahead and reemail that out for some reason. It just, it doesn't seem like, and I, last night I did it, it was after five o'clock. And I thought it went through and then I did it again this morning and then it's showing that it's still hanging out there for some reason. And so that will be more detailed, so then that way you'll have that knowledge on that. Yeah, last night after five, Mark was working late for me.
So ESNS is all in one system for the whole thing, which is. So where are we at for a motion?
Make a motion that we go with ESNS to our voting machine.
Is that, was that all right? Can I get a second? All second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, you know, all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
And then Mark, if you wanted to stay on the line or either one of you to hear these other topics, you're more than welcome to that also goes along with the election. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thanks, Sadie.
On number 11, since you took the vote on number 10, I would ask that you disregard for purposes of motion the first sentence of number 11. And it's very important, in my opinion legally, that you make a motion and I'm requesting, respectfully requesting, that you make a motion that the Lander County Clerk must undertake any and all action to assure and all appropriate accommodations are made to assure every legal voter has the opportunity to cast their ballot, including but not limited to making sure all necessary accommodations are made under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
So I'm leaving off, because of what we've just done, I'm just leaving off the first sentence?
Correct, so where it's out is.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure I'm, so I'm just going under the actions.
I mean, you could read, you can read the whole.
Okay. Sorry, all right.
Don't include that first part since we're going to make a statement.
So it starts with Lander County Clerk.
Okay, so Lander County Clerk must undertake any and all action to assure that all appropriate accommodations are made to assure every legal voter has the opportunity to cast their ballot, including but not limited to making sure all necessary accommodations are made under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
And then coming up that this is an action item.
And this is an action item.
I do believe you have to read the whole thing.
And you should, yes, as a matter of record.
You need to read the first sentence, you have disregard for making a motion.
Okay, so for discussion and possible action on whether to convert to paper ballots for all future elections. Upon any action to convert to paper ballots, Lander County Clerk must undertake any and all actions to assure that all appropriate accommodations are made to assure every legal voter has the opportunity to cast their ballot, including but not limited to making sure all necessary accommodations are made under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay, based on our decision of Agenda Item Number 10, we have gone with ESNS. And with that, we, I ask, my motion is to ask the Lander County Clerk must undertake any and all action to assure that all appropriate accommodations are made to assure every legal voter has the opportunity to cast their ballot, including but not limited to making sure all necessary accommodations are made under the American with Disabilities Act.
All right, do you have a second? So passing made the motion, Brian's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Did we do that right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, for discussion and possible action on whether to reappropriate budgetary funds to the printing and use of paper ballots for all future elections, such funds to be re-appropriated from election services fees, all licenses fees and warranty fees associated with the use of electronic voting machines, namely those all funds allocated under the Voting System Agreement by and between Dominion Voting System Incorporated and Lander County, Nevada, dated October 17th, 2017.
So I would request that any motion would be directed at the reappropriation of budgetary funds to ESNS voting system. And then along with the rest of it.
All right, so re-appropriated?
So I make a motion, if there's no other comments or questions? I'll make a motion that we re-appropriate budgetary funds to the printing and use of paper ballots.
To?
To ENS.
To use of BSNS.
Yes, for ENSNS for all future elections, such funds to be re-appropriated from election service fees, annual license fees and warranty fees associated with the use of electronic voting machines.
Dominion, Dominion, electronic Dominion voting machines, need someone Dominion. Because we still have electronic machines in ESNS.
Somebody else want to make a motion, I'm confused about that.
Okay. We're re-appropriating money. The way that is listed on the agenda is the reappropriation would just go to paper ballots. But we need the reappropriation to go to ESNS voting system, away from Dominion voting machines. So that one word you used was, if you reappropriate away from the use of electronic voting machines, you're contradicting what we did. So it's, you want to reappropriate the fees that are associated with Dominion electronic voting machines.
Will that motion reflect what the councilor stated?
All right, so Brian made a motion, JR's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you need to work that language, Sadie?
Whatever legal says.
Basically, we're going away from Dominion to ESNS.
Correct, correct, correct. And also.
That was the intention.
I just would like direction, Sadie Solomon for the record, with there not being these funds in my budget, if I could get direction, do we need to bring back an item of where we're going to be pulling those funds?
Do we have to argue with the question?
So yeah, we'll have to do an argument.
Okay, okay, that was my question. Thank you much.
So you can work with that and, and I'll help you to do an agenda request.
Okay, perfect.
So we can get that done as soon as possible. Thank you guys very much for all your time spent.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so for correspondence for future. Alright, so for correspondence for future agenda items. Alright, an update maybe if we can get for the library, for you, please?
Would you guys like me to?
We need to bring back the vaccine thing that we discussed.
That will have to be through Dr. Ferro, since he is the.
Got you, okay.
So I'll reach out to him and make sure he's the chair of that board, make sure that he wants to be down.
Okay.
Got you, okay. Can we might ask too, if there's any correspondence from him, that make sure that he copies Ron in all like things that he's working on or thinking about, so Ron has all that?
Any further?
Want to continue with any audit?
What audit?
On our machines or anything?
Uh, no.
No? We were talking about an audit at one time, not on machines.
On your machines?
Our voting machines.
We were?
Nobody asked about it.
Well, we talked about that in litigation.
Amy Nelson talked about it. Amy brought it up.
Yeah, it was under. Amy brought it up.
Amy suggested we do that. We've only discussed it in litigation, so I.
So we're just waiting, we don't need an agenda?
No. Any other, anything else?
Would you guys like me to bring back some other options for moving forward with Austin?
Please.
Yes, please.
Alright, so do we have any, anything else? Any public comment?
Y'all have a nice Nevada day.
Alright, motion to adjourn. Alright, Brian made the motion, I second it, all in favor? Aye, very good, thank you everyone, thank you guys very much.